Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the London Dairy Town Council meeting for July 10, 2023. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing for a moment of silence for all those men and women who serve us here and abroad in the military services and in protection of our country. Thank you. Okay. All right, so council, we have a long agenda tonight, so we are going to stay on point here. So I'm gonna start with the public comment, presentation of Rabies Clinic check.
Serge? Serge, our wonderful band director was going to be here tonight with his son, but since we're first in so early, he's here. But when they do get here, Deb and I are just honored to donate to the London Dairy High School Band. Not us donating it, but from the rabies clinic that we held in town, helped many dog owners out, even a few cats, and we raised just a little under $1,000. Special thanks to Dr. Myrna Gregorio of the London Dairy Vet Clinic. She's donated her time the last three years for us and all of the rabies vaccinations. So Deb was there working, Carol from our office, many volunteers too. And it was great, Deb, right?
Yeah, wonderful.
It was really wonderful. So this, all of this money will go to the band for their trip to London coming up soon. And next year we'll have it again, and hopefully we'll make even more money. So special thanks to everyone.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Myrna, who always volunteers every year to do that. Next item I have is for Steve and Julie Lee for the London Dairy Concerts on the Common.
Okay, he's controlling it.
Hi, my name's Larry Casey. I'm the chair of the London Dairy Arts Council. Steve and Julie will update you on Concerts on the Common in a minute, but I wanted to take just a minute to provide an overview of what the concert, or what London Dairy Arts Council was involved with. Our mission is to enrich the quality of life here in London Dairy through the arts, and we've been doing that for many, many years through a variety of programs. And just to hit some highlights in terms of what's going on right now, for many years we've had a featured artist program next door at the library. If you go into the library and walk around the window areas around the perimeter of the stacks, you'll see art on display every month. We have 12 featured artists throughout the year. We held our Arts Cafe this spring, which is, brings together artisans, artists, and musicians for a day of relaxation and enjoying, enjoying the arts. That was held at the Orchard Christian Fellowship Church in April. During COVID, one of the things we tried to do was virtualize our programming because of the quarantine situation. So one of the things that we came up with was a virtual youth art contest with three different age categories, but the youth of our community submitted artwork, scanned it, uploaded it, and it was juried and judged by art teachers, and we continue that program. We'll be kicking that off in September when the academic school year starts. We have a new program that we're working on in collaboration with Alona Art and the Senior Affairs Group. In fact, this Sunday, we will be holding a second senior jam for the love of music. That'll be at the Senior Center from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. in the afternoon. I was away for the first one, but my understanding is we had 10 musicians show up for a jam session, and we had over 60 seniors from the community in attendance at that. The other thing that we're going to be starting this year with a hopeful launch date of next spring is a literary and art magazine, digital format. We're looking to get people who have writing talent and visual arts talent to contribute to this. It'll be, you know, jury contribution, and we were excited about that, but we want to open up our programming to the written word and also give an opportunity and a platform to people that are doing fine art and photography. So that will be coming, and I've already spoken with Mike Malaguti about, you know, how we go about doing that in a correct way and make sure that we're not only complying with legal requirements, but making sure that we're in accordance with, you know, community standards in terms of taste and content. So I just wanted to say a few, few words before Steve and Julie come up and talk about Concerts on the Common, but I also want to thank the board, John in particular for his support, everybody in the town administration for helping out with Concerts on the Common and the Arts Council in general. We appreciate not just the moral support, but the financial support as well to further our programs. So I'll turn it over to Steve and Julie to talk about Concerts on the Common.
Steve and Julie, if we can just pause for a second. I guess Serge just walked in the room, and they want to present him the check real quick. So if we could, if we could do that for just a second, and, you know, if you could just bear with me, and I'll let the ladies do their thing.
Serge, we'd be so happy to do something for being here. We just wanted to make sure that you did receive this check from our rabies clinic for a little under $1,000. And so we just want to make sure that you, that money will be put to great use for your trip to London. So we wanted to make sure that you did receive it.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
And for the council. So, you know, we thank you for all you do for the LHS Band. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. Always want to help out the band.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I'm Stephen Leas, my wife Julie.
I'm over here.
And we'd like to thank Larry. Larry's also the chairman of the London Dairy Arts Council, along with helping, working with Julie and I on the concerts. So just kind of a quick rundown, an update on where we are. We sent you some documents, just our opening remarks that we have every week. It lists all of our sponsors, along with the program we gave you, those has, that has the sponsors on there also. And then also some narrative questions that Larry has answered that are pertinent to the grant we get from the state every year. And I think if you read those, he really does an excellent job, just incredible job, explaining the mission and purpose of the, of the concerts. And that kind of is wrapped up in our, our tagline, which is "Community, Great Music, and Summer Evenings," with a real emphasis on community. We've been doing this, this is our 23rd season, and along with the concerts, we also roll in, making sure the bandstand is in, is in good shape. We get a lot of support from the town on that, obviously. But some things we've done over the years, the stone facade was put on, the stage and the tree LED lighting, and then we also make sure that it gets painted regularly, just to make sure it stays in shape. Some successes last year, some highlights. The concerts are extremely weather dependent. So if we're not having good weather and we move inside, attendance goes way down because it's not a Concerts on the Common. But we have found that it's just the best way for us to manage the bands that we're programming and such to have the concert. It just makes it simpler in the long run, frankly. But last year, we were outside every week, and it's sketchy some nights, but we had, the average was, average attendance was over 500 people, so it was quite high for us. This year's looking good, but we've been inside two concerts already, and so those were way down. So our average isn't as high, but when we're outside, the, the audience is, is looking very good. Our funding, well, so we have a funding from the town, gives us funding. We get, do a lot of fundraising through sponsors in town. That takes a lot of time in the spring and getting into early summer. And then we also get a grant from New Hampshire Council for the Arts. We've, I think we've had that two or three years now, and that's something that Larry and Steph Miville lead getting that, and it's a lot of work to, to get that every year. We also have a lot of community partners, the town, obviously, the school district, helping us with, when we have to move inside, they're just great, making sure that we have a stage and they help with things like lighting and things like that. The police, fire department, DPW. This year, we have the volunteer alert organization helping with directing parking, which is great. We also have the churches supporting us with parking and such. We have vendors, food vendors, different exhibitors that come to the concerts, and again, trying to just draw in different aspects of the community to expose people to different things that they could get involved in or just enjoy. One thing we'd like to point out is the value of the concerts. So our free concerts allow individuals and families with limited means to enjoy a picnic supper, you know, really in a beautiful setting while listening to what we hope to be exceptional, exceptional music performances. And it's an experience that might otherwise be financially out of reach for some folks. If you compare going to, like Tupelo or the Palace, in our grant presentation, grant proposal, we estimated that the average ticket price for comparable performance at Tupelo or a commercial venue like Tupelo or the Palace would be about $29 based on the level of talent that we book. And so over the course of the typical 11 concerts that we have in a season, that would represent a value of almost $1,300 for a family of four. So we think that, you know, there's a lot of, you can see from the slideshow that a lot of people like to take advantage of that, and I think that's really great. The funding's approximately a third from the town, and the remainder is really from the New Hampshire, New Hampshire Council on the Arts and from our local business sponsors, who we really appreciate them pitching in every year. And we also, two or three, three or four years ago, I think now, we took on finding the, supporting the artist that's playing on the Old Home Day concert. And so that, that money now comes out of part of the fundraising and everything, too. We added that 11th concert.
To Wednesday night, kicking off Old Home Day.
Yeah, kicking off Old Home Days. So that's kind of it.
Questions from the council? Yeah, please. Do you know, on average, what you're looking at for people this year right now?
So if we discount the going into the schools, because it's really not the same thing. We've been, I think we're, I think the high school was 250, 60, something like that. The next concert outside was 461, and the next concert was actually 462. So we had a little increase there in that last concert.
So you're staying close to your 500 on average?
Yeah, and again, it's weather dependent. I think when it's consistently every week outside, people kind of get into the habit of it. And also, even though we've been outside, it's been very hot. And so I think that that dissuades some people to, to go when it's that hot out. So again, it's very weather dependent.
And we're looking at 90-degree day.
Yeah, for Wednesday.
To top it off for Wednesday.
We're gonna be outside, so hallelujah.
Yeah, it's gonna be a bit warm, but.
It's gonna be hot.
But that concert usually draws over 700.
That, not this one. The ones.
Neuronic?
Neuronic gumbo. They, they draw a big crowd. The ones that were over 700, or 750, was, let's see, it was the Beatles.
The Doobie Brothers. We had a Doobie Brothers cover.
The Doobie Brothers last cover band, and then I think it was a Studio, Studio Two, the Beatles cover.
The Beatles band, which we have for the Old Home Day kickoff.
Yeah, and they're back this year. We also have two other bands that have drawn, we can kind of gauge it somewhat on our Facebook page, because that's kind of our main line of communication with folks. And the interest that the bands are getting the most interest would be Foreigner's Journey, and they were really big when they were here last, right before the pandemic. They were, so we didn't even hand out tickets at that one, because we just kind of gave up. So that one, we're gonna have a lot of people. And then also, we have a Linda Ronstadt cover band, and the woman that's singing is, she was a finalist in American Idol. So, and we've heard.
That's drawing a lot of interest as well.
Yeah, that should be really a lot of fun.
Well, I think they're playing a flying monkey the same week.
Oh, really?
I just picked that up in one of the.
So we aren't, yeah, we have to be careful how we advertise that particular one.
I, I just happened to see it yesterday.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, it should, it should be a great concert, yeah. Should be a lot of fun.
Hope for what? No one on Wednesdays?
Yeah, so hopefully they're not playing in the cafeteria. I'm always very upfront about that, but I bet a lot of these people haven't played in a cafeteria for many years.
So you're advocating for building the dome.
That'd be wonderful. Yeah, sure. We're there.
Anything else from the council?
Thank you for what you do.
Well, thanks for your support.
Yeah, as you guys know, I mean, I try to get there whenever I'm in town and everything. You could do a terrific job. Enough can't be said about Concerts on the Common. Enough can't be said about Larry and Julie and Steve and the work they do.
And all of our volunteers.
All the volunteers that are there.
We have Karen tonight.
The alert team, the police and the fire department. I mean, it's really a great thing for the community and everybody comes together, but it wouldn't happen without the three of you. So thank you.
All right, so it's everybody, really. So, but thank you very much. Thanks for your support. We appreciate it.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have a public comment next. We have 16 items on our gen tonight. We're gonna be limiting public comment to three minutes, and I'm going to be keeping things to about 20 minutes tonight in the closing public comment. So whomever would like to come up first is more than welcome.
Good evening. Mark Oswald and.
Pollyann Winslow.
Levin Verdi Lane.
For Carstone Drive.
It's more fun on this side of the desk. We're just here to ask, your continued support for the leadership program. We started 20 years ago. We've had 17 classes. We've had 255 residents go through the program. As someone said early on, it's rumor control. It's a great opportunity for our fellow residents to understand how we govern as a community. And an opportunity to just thank the council and the school administration, the school board for their support. It takes a lot of time, a lot of dedication on part of the department heads, police and fire, DPW, town clerk's office. I know I'm leaving people out, but hope that you'll consider supporting the program again for this year.
Yeah, I think the council's aware, we will, council will probably continue to support it, so the council's aware. The town manager has been having conversations with him and asked for a little bit of, I'll call it breathing space, so that he can get his staff up and running. And I, I guess you, you all are communicating with each other, so we'll kind of leave it to all of you. But I, I think the council's support remains the same.
Absolutely. You guys do a great job.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Anyone else for public comment?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. I just wanted to come to you tonight to update you on the question that was brought up a few months back in reference to the.
The record chief, O'Brien.
In reference to the apparatus that we have that contains the firefighting foam that contains PFAS. So as I told you the last time I was up here, I had received word from the state fire marshal's office last fall that they were gonna be doing something last fall, and nothing ever came to fruition to do that. I have since contacted a cleanup company to see what the estimate was gonna be to basically get our systems flushed, to recapture what we have on the apparatus, and then to be able to replace it with the new green foam that's out there. And that's gonna be somewhere around a $30,000 bill. Just so happens, the day after I got this estimate, I got another notice back from the state fire marshal's office, and I just spoke to Sean Tumi last Thursday, and the state is now going to move forward with the reclaiming of all the foam that these fire departments have. Our closest site is gonna be Nashua, so we'll have to evacuate it from the, from the vehicles and take it over to Nashua. And we're supposed to be getting more notification from the state in reference to what this procedure is gonna be to give us a guideline on how to do it, what are the best practices to do it. And I'm hoping to see that, he said, probably within the next two weeks. So I just wanted to let everybody know that we weren't kicking this can down the road. I was just trying to do my due diligence to save the taxpayers some money, knowing that this was gonna be offered by the state, and just was waiting for, to get a response from them. So that's the latest update. I will update you further, or somebody will, in reference to when it is, when we go through the process of getting evacuated and cleaned up and reclaimed. But that's the, that's the latest update.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Richard Polinski, 89 Hall Road. I'm gonna bring something to the attention of the people of London Dairy that the town is aware of. And before anybody wants to beat up the messenger, this is information. It's information that came from the town. It's information that people, some people know and others don't. Later on tonight, you'll be talking about the old, the former Lions Hall. What I'm talking about is the fact that, as far as I'm concerned and the people I've spoken to, if the town is making any efforts to get back the $80,000 that they expended on repairs on the Lions Hall, that we were not responsible as taxpayers because per their lease that they originally signed in 1972, they are 100% responsible for all maintenance, repairs, upkeep, inside and outside of the Lions Hall. That was the reason they got it for a dollar a year. I'm also in, have some information that came from a Lions member and went to another Lions member I now have a copy of, that they have $80,000 sitting in a Wellington account, and that they also have $16,000 in donations that was made to them by Home Depot and Benson's for renovations that were needed on the building that they didn't use it for. And that this member actually quit the Lions Hall over this and some other issues. And what is, what is the town gonna do to try to get the taxpayers $80,000 back? The money came out of the maintenance trust fund, and as far as I'm concerned, and I have all the invoices here, the invoices, the dates, how much and everything. It came right to me from the town, so this is what it is. And I'm sure some of you up there are aware of this. One, I don't know why it was ever done. I understand it's a town building. They say they couldn't afford to do it, but they had a lease. After the first time, they couldn't afford to do some maintenance to the building because they couldn't afford it, if that's the true case, they were in violation of the lease, yet it went, for years and years more, they were allowed to do the same thing and came running to the town. This individual even says in here, they had the money, yet they still just asked the town for money. I can give you the names as you want, but I think that part's irrelevant. So the people need to know this. We're gonna be talking later today about what you, you know, later on in the agenda, about the Lions Hall, and what we, you know, may or may not do with it, and what needs to be done with it. Maybe some of this wouldn't have been done of when they couldn't afford to do the repairs originally. The town had terminated the lease. That's what you do with a lease. That's why it's in the lease. And this isn't hearsay. I can read the lease right here if you want. I got the whole thing. Apparently, the last lease, actually, from what I can see, never even got signed. So they were in there a few years with, with an unsigned lease. So obviously, you can't do anything today, but I'd like at the next meeting, or the, you know, the meeting after, I don't know when the next one is, if it's in two weeks or a month, I'd like some answers. And I don't, you know, the answer I don't want is, well, it's a town building, they couldn't do it, so we did it. Because that's not an answer, because this is a lease. I have a real estate license.
Your time has expired.
Yeah, my time's expired.
Your time's expired.
But you don't have any rules, John, because you didn't vote them in.
Your time has expired.
Your time, you did not vote them in.
Sir, you were out of order. Your time has expired.
Within 10 days of the meeting, as the charter requires.
Sir, you're out of order. Your time has expired.
And when the people were talking about the concerts on the common, it was also over five minutes.
Sir, last warning.
But, you know, John, I don't care what your warning is.
You're out of order. Your time has expired.
You have to do and pay the consequences.
Your time has expired. Thank you. Anyone else for public comment, please?
Brian Mead, 555 Mammoth Road, The Village. With the proposal of two apartment buildings going in at the Mammoth Road-Page Road-Grenier Field intersection and further development in North London Dairy, I wanted to bring the dangers of that intersection to the attention of the town council. I have a traffic safety committee meeting minutes dating back to April of 2015, discussing the dangers of Mammoth Road through the village and the dangers of that intersection. I'm gonna try to respect the time. So this is from April 6, 2015. From 2000 to 2010, there have been three accidents. From 2010 to present, which is five years, there were 10 accidents. And I had some numbers put together. At one point, the town installed some dynamic stop signs that would flash as they recognized vehicles approaching either north or south. Those work part of the year when there's enough sunlight because they're solar powered, and during the winter, they don't work at all. So at the time that I requested these accident reports, I went back the same amount of time pre-installation as post-installation to get, you know, the number of accidents at that intersection. And there was a difference of six, with more before the dynamic lights were put in. And so that was 14 accidents at that intersection from July of 2019 until January of this year. And I can tell you, we've had three in the six-week period of April, May, and into June. Serious accidents, vehicular accidents, some involving, well, one involved a motorcyclist. It's an issue, as the fire chief said, that has been kicked down the road. The can has been kicked and kicked. In one of our recent traffic safety committee meetings, Bob Ramsey said that he's been on the committee for 30 years, and this has been an issue for the whole time he's been on that committee. I don't think that there's any way that that intersection can handle any more traffic, any increases in traffic with its current configuration. A lot of the issues, and we have video that I've shared with the town manager, that you can, you can see the accidents occurring, and all of them are from people going north or south on Mammoth Road. We live right at the intersection there. And what we have proposed is that that road be dead-ended with a gate. We've proposed speed tables to slow the speed because the, the signs don't work if you're looking at your phone. Oftentimes, people will pass you by the senior center if you're going 30 miles an hour, because it's not fast enough. That road is used as a cut-through to avoid the lights on 28.
So if I, I actually attended the meeting that you were at in which you were discussing this. The, I think what the council probably needs to do here is in these type of situations, is ask the town manager to direct the police department and the fire department to come back to us with, with additional information around, sir, if you can't be quiet, you can leave. Okay? Come back to us with additional information around the accidents this gentleman has spoken about. Let's get some feedback for, you know, for what they have seen out at the intersection, and then see what it is we can and we can't do to address it. Part of the issue is it's a state road, so there's only certain things we can and we can't do. So.
Which one is the state road? The Mammoth Road of The Village or the Page Road-Grenier Field?
Well, it's, it's Page Road-Grenier Field, but it feeds into Mammoth Road, which is the state road where the traffic light is.
Okay, so Route 28.
So I'm not sure. I'm, I want to get all the information.
Sure, okay.
For the whole surrounding area. So if, if you, if the council's okay with the town manager asking police and fire to look at, so what we're looking at is, is the entire Mammoth Road intersection and the Page Road-Grenier Field Road intersection.
Yes, you're exactly right, Mr. Chairman, that the Grenier and Rockingham Road intersection is a state-controlled, basically, it's our driveway onto a state road. So you're exactly correct in that regard. And so, you know, any changes that are made in this vicinity certainly need to be run by DOT to make sure that they don't have an issue with it. But what I can tell you, Mr. Chairman, is I've attended at least, at least two, possibly three, traffic safety committee meetings where there's been, I think, good progress made. Staff met for an hour this morning. The videos and other input that's been supplied by Mr. Mead and his neighbors has been invaluable. We are going to solve this problem, and speaking for myself, but I think others on the traffic safety committee, I believe that we're gonna be able to solve this problem, at least identifying a solution a week from today at the next traffic safety committee meeting. identifying a solution a week from today at the next Traffic Safety Committee meeting.
Well, we'll look forward to an, to an update at the next Town Council meeting. This is all great information and I'm glad that you're engaged and working with the town.
I do want to just remark here, I am excited about that as well and hopeful. In January of 2018, we sat in a Traffic Safety Committee where the Stonehenge-Harty Road intersection was turned to a four-way intersection. Traffic Safety Committee, they approved that. And the previous town manager, when we brought this intersection up, he said that the Page Road, Granier Field, Mammoth Road intersection was a greater danger and needed to be fixed than the Stonehenge and Hardy Road intersection. So forgive me if I'm not optimistic.
I'm not going to find any disagreement here. So, all right, thank you. So thank you for bringing it to our attention and we'll have, we'll get some feedback for you by the next council meeting.
Thank you very much.
Do you think you could have our DPW director looped in on this?
Who member the town manager believes is necessary to get us an answer.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, some of my staff may not appreciate that I'm getting out in front of them on this, but to be perfectly clear about the solution that I am talking about, I intend to make a motion on Monday evening to, to gate off that section of the roadway.
Thank you.
Jonathan Esposito, 5 Shelby Drive here in Londonderry. Just want to briefly address how public comment is being conducted. Prior citizen was cut off, they didn't have the opportunity to fully finish their thought. But as they correctly pointed out, according to the Town Charter, the Town Council at its reorganization meeting within 10 days of the town election was to take that opportunity to vote in any rules of order that they wish to adopt. As the citizen who was speaking prior did not have the opportunity to finish, this session of the Town Council did not vote to adopt any rules of order. We're not trying to be contentious, I'm not trying to be a disruptive citizen. That is simply a historical fact during your session of the council. So we appreciate that you're trying to keep things moving along in an orderly fashion, Mr. Chairman, but the three-minute limit is especially arbitrary considering the fact that the original limit was five minutes for several years prior and you inappropriately cut that time down by two minutes again for years. So really, you should be trending in the direction of allowing citizens more time since you, whether unintentionally or not, denied them opportunity in the past. I'd also like to speak to the fact that the gentleman who was speaking specifically addressed a topic on the agenda, which is what you've asked us to try to stick to before. We all know that when the Lions Hall is discussed later this evening as an agenda item, that it's not a public hearing. And we know that you will be banging that gavel and you will not be entertaining public comment. You will in fact shout citizens down. So it would behoove you to give folks a little extra time to speak to a topic on the agenda, even if it goes over your extremely arbitrary three-minute limit. We would appreciate if you would conduct a public comment in a little more citizen-friendly manner. And please get that look off your face. You're clearly disgusted with my remarks, but I'm a citizen. I have the right to be here and speak, sir.
Sir, you're out of order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sir, you're out of order.
I'm not out of order, Mr. Chairman. You can contain yourself, sir. Thank you.
Sir, you're out of order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sir, you are out of order.
I will have the last word, sir. Thank you.
So with regards to the rules of the council, both gentlemen are wrong. The comments for the rules of the council stand as they are. They're wrong about the charter. So let's continue on in an orderly fashion. Again, wrong about it. Please proceed.
Ray Burson, 3 Gary Drive. I just, just want to ask, is it okay to speak something that's going to be on the agenda?
Of course.
Okay. So in regards to the Woodmont Common Development Agreement, that the town and Pillsbury Realty and the others with the POD have an agreement. But the, the agreement has been modified a couple of times. And even the Woodmont Development Master Plan is, is a vision, but can be changed all along the way. In particular, my concern in this is in regards to both the water and sewer. And I believe they're going to be coming forward to speak about their plan that apparently the town has already agreed and signed. And now we're just bringing this forward to the public? I, I think this needs to be discussed further, particularly when we're looking at a lot of development outside of Woodmont. And by the way, when one of the other gentlemen spoke about the village, as part of that, I believe the town is talking about bringing sewage up, I think to Mr. Evans' property along Rockingham Road. And in this development agreement here, in regards to Woodmont, I think we, we've got to consider all the other impact that the town is going to be dealing with in regards to water and sewer. It's fine, you've got the POD, you're trying to work with Woodmont, which can be beneficial to the town, but we've got a lot of other issues. And as far as the $4 million that we were fortunate enough to get from the federal government, pretty much that's being used for the Woodmont project. I, I would suggest we need to look at the rest of town and how are we going to deal with water and sewer in town? And we do have a utility committee, and I think the utility committee needs to be fully engaged in any of this discussion with Woodmont. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Representative Wayne McDonald, 11 Dickey Street here in Londonderry, along with representative and tonight councillor Dunn. I wanted to talk a little bit about the state budget we just recently passed. I know that finances are a critical part of our community. I want to congratulate you, Mr. Chairman and the council, for your efforts at working to expand the tax base, economic development, doing everything you possibly can to keep taxes under control as we try to do at the state level. I, I've talked to staff recently. I can tell you that we passed a $15.2 billion budget, but more importantly, what does that do for Londonderry? That's, that's why I'm here tonight, that's why you're here tonight, that's why the folks behind us are here tonight. Legislative Budget Assistant isn't able to give me exact figures for a number of reasons. All categories, for example, as, as they relate to education, don't have estimates yet. And the agencies that need to compute the data to distribute the funding, some of that information isn't going to be available till the end of the fiscal year. And they're going to, you know, they're going to be, you know, keeping us up to date on that matter. But I can tell you that in terms of the total education grant for Londonderry for fiscal year 2024, it's going to be in the $11 million range and also in fiscal year 2025. And also, when you add that to the whole harmless and the swept money, it's in the $18 million, almost $19 million range for both fiscal years. In terms of municipal aid in general, and I can only talk about this more statewide, the budget supports almost $2.69 billion in state aid to cities and towns over the biennium. And this includes approximately $2.21 billion in education, adequate education aid to cities and towns and public charter schools over the biennium. Approximately $244.6 million in meals and rooms distribution to cities and towns and over $105 million in highway aid to cities and towns. Fully funds highway block grants to cities and towns at $72.2 million over the biennium. We were just talking about roads here a minute ago. Includes an additional $10 million in general fund appropriations, bringing the anticipated total to $82.2 million for the upcoming biennium. Provides $22 million for municipal bridge aid and fully funds the highway and bridge betterment program at $84.2 million over the biennium. This is a snapshot, Mr. Chairman, I know time is limited tonight and I don't want to delay matters, but just want to let you know that we're trying at the state level to supplement your efforts here at the local level and obviously anything that you need, anything that we can possibly do, we want to work with the council and, and serve the citizens of Londonderry. We all know what a special place it is and we want to keep it that way. So thank you for your time tonight, Mr. Chairman, members of the council.
Thank you.
Ann Champ, 28 Wedgewood Drive. First, I'm going to ask you a question of something that was just brought up. Chairman Farrell, the gate on which section of the road or what road in relation to the rezoning that's coming up, which section you want to gate off?
That was his comment, not ours.
Oh, whose?
The gentleman who was up here was talking about gating it off. We were not.
Oh, okay. I also want to mention, as a member of the planning board, I voted against the rezoning for a couple of reasons, because of the traffic and the accidents on that corner. I would have voted for it if the second entrance and exit to the project was also on Page Road as it was in the first design go-round of that project. But I was concerned about the traffic exiting onto Old, I'll call it Old Mammoth Road and onto that intersection because the intersection is so close in that area. Anyways, the reason I came here tonight was to talk about the proposal to do work on the, what you call the Lions Hall. But I'd like to have it more well-known as Reverend Morrison's Meeting House in the Old Town Hall. Chairman Farrell, can I pass out something to each member of the?
Sure.
I can take it so she can continue.
What I passed around to the Town Council and other folks that are Kelly and Mr. Malagody sitting at the front tables here was the, a page from Willie's Book of Nutfield. George Franklin Willie's Book of Nutfield, a gentleman who did a number of wonderful books concerning Londonderry, Nutfield, and the surrounding areas when he was less than 30 years old. What I showed is what you call the Lions Hall, the large section in the Lions Hall. It is the old Meeting House. This book of Willie's was published in 1895. And if you read the first couple of sentences, "The old Meeting House in the order, in the order of building," this was the fourth in Londonderry, "and although it was removed from the old site near the present, present residence of Frank and Hardy and converted to, into the present Town Hall 50 years ago," so that would make it 1845 approximately, "it is still remembered with federation by a score of people." Okay. What they mean by the residence of Frank Hardy, near the residence of Frank Hardy, was Maxwell property on the top of the hill at the intersection with Hardy and Pillsbury Roads. It sat on that property along with its session house and it was moved from there over the Mam, to the Mammoth Road. Let's see. And it describes it, "Exterior appearance was that of a two-story farmhouse. The main door was on the south side," and you can see it on the two, the illustrations, "the plan of the gallery, which would be the second floor, and the, the ground floor level." You have a vision. Imagine what was going on in that building back then in approximately 1769, when it was originally proposed and started. If that date sounds familiar to you, 1769, it's when the First Parish Church in East Derry was also built. So if you consider what's been going on at the First Parish Church in East Derry, or the Meeting House as they call it now, I hope you consider our building on Mammoth Road in Londonderry just as important to the citizens of the East Parish here in Londonderry as, as the one in Derry was to the West Parish. And they've been, they've been, I'm sorry if I'm yelling, they've, but hopefully the people at, at home won't hear me. They've been having, without the microphone.
So Ann, we gotta, we gotta move things along.
Okay, sorry. Well, I got distracted by the first thing. They have, they had hired preservation timber frame to, to do an assessment of the, of their project, the church and the steeple. And it's interesting because we contacted the same people to do an assessment of the parts for the Reverend William Morrison's home that we have in the Sorden trailers at the Morrison House. So I know Aaron Sturgis and his company very well because we got the same documentation of the building and the plans for reconstruction as they did over in Derry for their church.
So, so help me out, Ann, where are we going here?
Okay. What I'm going to say, I hope this isn't, for example, I read in the, where is it? Here, Weston and Sampson's memo. I'm only saying this because I, I can't foresee the future of what's coming afterwards after I speak about this project. It talks about a new front porch and all that, that's on the front section of the building that was joined with Reverend Morrison's Meeting House, which I'll call the Old Town Hall.
So with regards to the Lions Hall, we're just having a discussion tonight?
I know. But when it says.
Whether, whether or not we're going to allow them to use ARPA funds to go forward.
Right.
There'll be another discussion about what we're going to do.
Right, I know, but I'm looking at the timeframe. It's two weeks and then four weeks for the.
I understand.
Plans to be done. I just want you to think about, instead of replacing the porch, which is similar, very similar to the ones that's on the Mac Homestead, the front of it, which basically used to face the south, south to the farm, the farm stand before Mammoth Road was built. Remember, that was only built in 18, was it 30? 1831, excuse me. And the house produced, pre, what do you call, was there before it. And also the Colonel William S. Pillsbury's homestead on Pillsbury Road, the same front porch. That's essential to the character of that building also. When they stay a new one, I could see it if it structurally isn't stable enough, but to remove it, that to me would be an abomination to this building.
I'm sure once they get into the project, they'd welcome your input, welcome your comments, welcome your history.
Well, I also want to say.
I just, we're not going to talk about the building tonight.
But I also want to say, I can't thank Jim, Councillor Butler enough for inviting me to come over to see the, and Mr. Cotton, who was in charge of the restoration of the floors in there, to invite me and to see it. And Jim and I actually climbed up into the attic and took a look around. So I knew, I'm very familiar with the building and its history. So I wish the Historical Society could have been, I forgot to mention, I'm the past president and curator of the Historical Society. I wish the Historical Society would have been contacted about possibly giving input into it before the plans were made. I think that might have been more helpful. And I want to thank you, John, for, I should say, Councillor Butler, for giving me a few extra seconds here.
Happy to do so, Ann. I know you're passionate about it. I understand.
Thank you. And you, you can tell I raised my voice a little when I.
That's okay.
Get excited, but I appreciate the time.
How we doing? Tom Esty, Old National Road, lifelong resident. Part of the Charter, Section 3.2, Organization Meeting. The councilors so chosen shall meet in their capacity as the council within 10 calendar days following their election for the purpose of taking their respective oaths of office, adopting the rules. adopting the rules, and for the transaction of business required by law or ordinance to be transacted in such meeting."
Yep. You're applying the inappropriate portion of the charter. We've already talked to legal counsel multiple times. Public comment...
Well, this is in the charter.
Excuse me. And the council can be run by the chairman at his discretion or her discretion. If they want to have 10 minutes, if they want to have an hour for public comment, it can be done at their discretion. They can be overruled by the rest of the council. That is the way the rules run. So we're not going to have this discussion anymore about rules. Those are the rules. We have public comment rules, and we're going to follow them. That's the end of it.
So why is it fair for one person to get up and speak for 10, 15 minutes?
At the comment, at the...
But then you give someone else three minutes?
Well, I'm not going to stand here and argue with you about it. No, I gave him four and a half minutes. Okay?
Well, whatever it was. And I'm not taking anything away from Anne either, because you know what? I mean, if everyone in this room, I believe everyone's from, I think most of these people are from Londonderry. We're taxpayers. And you know what? If we go over five minutes, big deal. Who cares?
Again, we have business to conduct. Those are the rules. You have to follow the rules.
Does anyone have anything to say to me before I sit down?
Thank you.
No?
Thank you.
Okay.
Marge Bedoy, Conservation Commission. I promise this will be quick. In regards to the Woodmont's proposal, I just want to make known that the Conservation Commission took no official position on the Woodmont's pump station, but we did recommend that it not be placed within the wetland buffer.
Okay.
And unfortunately, the conditional use permit was approved over our recommendation, so it's there. But my concern is that in the agenda here, there's no map indicating where that pump station is located, and we were told that that pump would be the only encroachment into the wetland buffer. That's it.
Make sure somebody asks about it, please. Thank you. Thank you. All right, this is going to be the last comment. We've already gone to half an hour.
Deb DeRochers, excuse me, 25 Row Lane. I had put this paper together to read to the council and the people watching tonight in the gallery here a couple of weeks ago when we had an incident in our town clerk's department. And I thought since Sherri's article in the Dairy News brought so many people forward, came into our office, emails, everyone unbelievable, telling us how they felt so bad of what happened. I'd like to read it tonight. Excuse me. I'm not only a resident of Londonderry, but I also work here at the Town Hall in the Town Clerk's Department. I have the pleasure of interacting with all departments here in the Town Hall. In my opinion, we have a fantastic group of people in this building that are friendly, courteous, and professional. We all do our part to provide good service to our town residents. In the Town Clerk's Department, we see hundreds of residents each week. Recently, we had an incident, which was about a month ago, take place in our clerk's office. Three individuals disrupted our business day for no reason other than to try and get footage to post to a YouTube channel. They call it auditing public access to government buildings. Londonderry was one of many towns that week in the state of New Hampshire and other states that these self-proclaimed auditors went to. As a side note, just so you can know, these people that call themselves auditors are also referred to as fraudators by many other YouTube channels that make fun of them and post lengthy felony conviction records of some of them. These are disruptors live-stream and record reactions of employees as they loudly go from department to department, looking for one or two employees to berate and insult. I was one of them, proudly saying that. Every YouTube video is the same, same pattern of disruption, same berating insults. They're just recorded at different government buildings all over. I have many other very strong personal opinions about these people, but this is not the time or the place to express them. I do, however, want to personally, and on behalf of my coworkers, thank our town manager, Michael Malaguti, and our town clerk, Sherri Farrell, for stepping up and taking the brunt of the insults and comments that these people fired off at them. My last comment is, as a resident, not as an employee of the town. Londonderry is a great town. I am proud to live and work here. I am speaking for the many, many residents that feel as I do. We are tired of the same small group of people that are at these meetings over and over again, insulting members of the town council, the town manager, members of the boards, town employees, and constantly saying that everyone is corrupt. We feel that these past and present town counselors, past and present town manager, past and present board members, and past and present town employees have and always will make decisions that they feel are in the best interest of the residents of this town. If you don't agree, run for office. Get on a board or come and work for the town. Thank you.
All right, public comment is closed. Going to move on. Right before we move on, you know, my mother taught me a long time ago, you don't have something nice to say, probably shouldn't say anything at all. You know what? People need to be nice. They just need to be polite. If you come up and you make comments, doesn't mean that you're right. Doesn't mean they're facts. Doesn't mean it's exactly what happened. All right? Public comment, you can say what you want to say, but it doesn't mean that's exactly what happened. So we're a great community. Let's act like one. Let's be a great community. Let's do great things and stop dwelling on the negativity that is just not necessary. So with that, let's go to a public hearing. I'll accept the motion on Resolution 2023-13, open a public hearing for Scobie Pond boat launch grant acceptance.
So moved.
Second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will be as quick as I can on this one. This is something that Mr. Speltz from the Conservation Commission and I have been discussing, but Ms. Bedoy, the chair of the Conservation Commission, is here as well, and I'm hoping that she can back me up if I get into trouble on any of the details. There is a boat launch, but I think it is not a well-developed boat launch right now on Scobie Pond, and the Conservation Commission has identified an opportunity to access some governor's office for emergency relief and recovery funding that is specifically designated to allow the upgrade of town and city-owned boat launches. There is a grant program that requires a match of 25% from the municipality. This is a picture of that area that I think everybody's probably familiar with down Scobie Pond Road. This is what these particular types of boat launches look like. So we're not talking about motorboats or anything like that. It's something for kayaks and for folks to walk out there and enjoy the surrounding area. We have a quote for $25,529 for an all-season dock. Doesn't require a whole lot of maintenance, and it doesn't need to come out of the water in the winter. There isn't much in the way of site work that is required, and you can find similar docks like this in Auburn Village on Mesapeake Lake. There is a, we have submitted a grant application. However, one of the requirements is that in order to get an award, the town council has to specifically accept the funding in an anticipatory fashion and agree that the municipality will take care of it. The grant application that we have submitted is for $30,000, so just under $5,000 higher than the quote that I referred to from the previous slide. The delta would allow, if awarded, for limited improvement to the dirt and parking area. The town match would come from the conservation fund. That is not funded by tax dollars. It does not have a budgetary impact. Instead, these are funds that come into that conservation fund through other mechanisms, largely through the land use change tax and the arrangement that exists for the allocation of those funds. That is the presentation that I have for you this evening. I'm not sure if there's anything that you want to add, Marge? Fantastic. Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Yes.
Between you, Mr. Town Manager, and Dave Houley, do we see any potential repairs or maintenance with this type of dock in the future that may be needed or damage from weather?
I'm not sure if this is something that was discussed at the Conservation Commission. I know Mr. Speltz has a lot of expertise in this area. I can tell you, just from my limited discussions with him, that this is something that we don't foresee as a large draw on municipal resources. I don't want to represent to the town council that it will never require a dime in terms of maintenance, but that is something that could be worked out between the Conservation Commission and the town government if and when that arises, based on the need.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, real quick question. You had mentioned the fact that this dock is primarily only going to be used for kayaks and canoes?
Canoes. That's my understanding, yes. It could also be used for canoes.
Well, we all know what's going to happen. Someone's going to have either a motorboat or some type of propelled boat that's going to probably hook up to it. Will this dock be able to take care of that kind of abuse? Because it's going to happen. The other thing I have a question of is adequate parking down there. When that goes in, that's going to attract more people. I believe that we've had problems in the past with, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, drugs down there, drinking down there, and parking down there. So I don't want to, I'm not looking to put a damper on this, but that's reality.
I'm familiar with that concern from my days as a prosecutor. Counselor Butler, PD can certainly speak to that more. It's my understanding that, yeah, it's down a dark road, and it's a nice, you know, place, secluded place that, you know, people aren't always going there to do healthy things. But as far as the motorboat traffic on Scobie Pond, I don't know how frequent that is. Marge, I'm not sure if you have any commentary on that?
It's a public hearing.
Any motorboat that's on Scobie Pond typically belongs to the residents that are there, because there isn't a real good launch place for those boats to go through, to be launched, on that very narrow section. The other thing that this dock provides is a good place for fishing, and that was actually a request of one of the residents on Brewster Road, who was handicapped and couldn't get, you know, out into the water to fish. So I think this will also address his preferences for fishing.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Town Manager, are you able to pull up on a satellite map where exactly this will be located for those of us who do not know Scobie Pond?
It's a good question. Counselor comes. Let me see if I can locate it.
It's where that cleared-out area is now, right?
Yeah, I believe it's right here.
Yeah.
So zooming out. You know, it's not all by itself, but there is certainly, it's a, you know...
It's an area there where people use it as a turnaround now.
Okay.
So, ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to address the council with regards to this subject only? Yes?
Anne Champ, 28 Wedges Drive. As knowing a family that lives right close there, are the residents who live in that immediate area going to be contacted about this? Which entry point from Londonderry? I think they have a couple, you have a couple of them?
Only one entry point that I'm aware of.
There's a piece of property, though, also, that you own that's not connected to that, right?
To get to this dock, there's only one entry point.
Okay.
There is a municipally-owned piece of vacant land in this area, but we would, to my knowledge, we would not be accessed, there would not be access through there. There's no access point through that piece of property.
Okay. Just because that'd probably bring a lot more, I don't know how much, but more traffic to the area for them to be aware of it, or maybe they can put their comments. Pardon?
So if you've been out there, it's not an easy place to get to.
Oh, yeah, I've been out there.
It's not an easy road to navigate.
Yeah, but my old van could have done it, you know, if you want to get there. It's, by the way, it was an original connector that went up to, I think, what is it, Weeks Ave off of Auburn Room? So it's got some history behind that road, too.
Anything else? Public hearing. Bring it back to the council. Anything else from the council? So we're going to address this as part of the grant application and another item here in the agenda, right?
We didn't include a separate item, Mr. Chairman.
Did not include, usually you include a separate item for unanticipated revenue.
Right. There was, so there's been some confusion about that in the past, and so we opted to leave it under public hearing.
Terrific. Then we'll do it right now.
Single item.
Then I will ask for a motion to accept the unanticipated revenue for Resolution 202, 2023-13.
So moved.
Second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If your vote's affirmative, I'll accept the motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If your vote's affirmative, the public hearing is closed. Okay, next item. Next item is proposed funding agreement with Pillsbury Realty Woodmont Commons for completion of Pillsbury Pump Station sewer infrastructure project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is something that I briefed the council on extensively, probably in the last month or so. And the problem that we've been talking a lot about for a number of years is a lack of sewer capacity sufficient to fully build out the Woodmont Commons area. This affects other areas in South Londonderry along the 102 corridor as well, and has been an issue that we've been trying to address for a number of years. There, from the earliest days of the Woodmont Commons negotiations and ultimately the development agreement, and then the amendments to the development agreement, there has been an understanding that provisioning this area with adequate sewer capacity, water capacity for that matter, and other utilities would require a large measure of public-private participation and cooperation. This is something that is the rule and not the exception with respect to developments of this scale and magnitude. And in fact, the development agreement itself, and then the material amendments to it, recognize this, talking about the use of public financing, public-private cooperation, collaboration between the town and the developer. All of this is fundamental to not only the development agreement and the various amendments, but also to the success of the Woodmont Commons project. We have, contrary to something that was said earlier, not signed an agreement with Woodmont Commons, and then brought it in here for the council's blessing. Instead, we have negotiated with Woodmont Commons an agreement that I am comfortable recommending to the town council. But it is the town council's decision to approve or not approve this agreement. The agreement takes advantage of the fact that there has been an award of $4 million in community project funding secured through Congressman Papas's office and supported by Senator Shaheen and the Appropriations Committee on the Senate side. The total project is estimated at $7.75 million, and this agreement reflects how the parties will come up with the delta. This agreement provides that the town will allocate $2.6 million from the Sewer Enterprise Fund. The Sewer Enterprise Fund, similar to the Conservation Fund in the way that it is funded, does not affect the budget. It does not affect the tax rate. It is entirely funded and replenished by user fees. The Woodmont developer is proposing to bring $1.15 million to this project as well, but importantly, will fund... importantly, will fund any excess over the current $7.75 million estimate. As we all know, construction projects are not getting cheaper, and so the value of that guarantee should not be overlooked. This project also secures capacity for areas outside of Woodmont Commons. And in that regard, whereas the pump station and infrastructure leading to the Manchester wastewater treatment plant will accommodate 500,000 gallons of wastewater flow per day, only just over 300,000 gallons of wastewater flow per day are allocated to Woodmont under this agreement if adopted by the town council. And so this will allow us to take advantage of the environmental benefits, but also the economic development opportunities to put more of South Lunen Derry and the 102 corridor onto sewer. I've heard expressed in the past that, you know, we've done, we've done X, Y, and Z for Woodmont Commons, why should we do more? The success of Woodmont Commons is the success of the town of Lunen Derry and the Lunen Derry taxpayers. And in that connection, I would like to point out one last thing. The fiscal impact analysis that is required to be performed under the development agreement every year to determine what effect, what effect, if any, Woodmont Commons is having on the town's bottom line, shows this. In the tax year ending April 1st, and with respect to the most recent fiscal impact analysis, Woodmont was $2.2 million in the black on the town tax revenue side, and $5.1 million in the black on the school side. And so I suggest to you, Mr. Chairman, that just with the development that we've had in Woodmont alone to date, the community is receiving from Woodmont just around $8 million in cumulative revenue. This situation is only going to improve if the town can cooperate with Woodmont to fully build out the development in accordance with the master plan that was gone over at such great length all those years ago. I'm happy to take any questions that the council has about this agreement.
Questions? Either one.
Mr. Town Manager, you say this is potentially going to be for 300,000 gallons a day for Woodmont. What do we see for the future if they actually need more than that?
500,000 gallons per day is just about the maximum that the downstream section of our sewer infrastructure leading to Manchester can take. Right now, those pipes in the center and north part of town are only sized to take so much wastewater. And so while we could design a pump station that would accommodate more wastewater flow in the area we're proposing that pump station to go now, the downstream part of the system couldn't take that.
Would you have to improve more piping?
We would have to improve that section of the system down the road.
Okay. So, the system itself, the actual pump, could actually take more than 500,000, but the pipes themselves could not?
Right now, we're designing the pump to accommodate 500,000 gallons per day. If we wanted to upgrade the system and down the road, then the pump station itself would need to be upgraded. I will point out that the town's studies, including the facility study, don't anticipate a greater demand for sewer capacity than this. So this is consistent with the town's planning and management of our anticipated sewer capacity needs.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
My quick question. You mentioned that it does not affect taxpayers, it's only behaved by user fees, correct?
Correct.
So where does the 2.6 million come in the short term?
It comes from the Sewer Enterprise Fund, which is...
Okay. That's money we already have?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Just making sure. Thank you.
Was asked earlier, where's the pump station located?
Yes, that's a, that's a good question, and...
The proposed pump station.
And I do have representatives of Woodmont Commons here. I will, I'm unfamiliar with the, with Woodmont visiting the Conservation Commission to discuss the wetlands' impact of the pump station itself. I can tell you that as part of the grant, the federal grant funding, this is requiring a full environmental study at the federal level. But perhaps they can speak more, or Ms. Bedoy can speak more, to the buffer issue that was just, that was just mentioned. It does appear that, you know, that perhaps there's, there's some wetlands in this area, but I just, I don't have an answer for that question at the moment. I can tell you that the pump station is proposed to be cited, and I also have the engineering director here who will correct me if I get this wrong.
Attorney Pollock, would you like to address this?
Yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. I'm Ari Pollock. I'm with the law firm Gallagher, Callahan, and Gartrell in Concord. For many years now, I've been representing Pillsbury Realty Development. They're the master developer of the Woodmont Commons planned unit development. To answer the immediate question, I think what may have been referenced earlier during the public comment period was the permitting that related to the water supply booster station that is to be located adjacent to Michael's Way. That did have an impact on a wetland buffer around Duck Pond that was approved by the planning board. To my knowledge, the sewer pump station, which is proposed on the north side of Pillsbury Road where the town manager has the cursor now, has not had any permitting done other than some conceptual diagrams, and that would all be required and ahead of us.
Thank you.
While I'm up here, could I speak more generally to the agreement?
Sure.
I, like you, get the question all the time, why isn't Woodmont Commons moving more quickly? It's, what's there is great, but we want more and we want it faster. There are plenty of reasons for the pace. Some of them are financial, some of them are market, some of them are supply and demand, some of them are physical. There's only so much water to be supplied, and that, again, was the genesis of the conversation for the water pump station and the arrangements made with Penachuck Water that went through the planning board for not only a tank project, but a booster station. Sewer is a big impediment as well. The town of Derry's plant will only accept so much from Lunen Derry, it will only accept so much from Woodmont, and with development comes waste, and if you want to develop and generate waste, you have to send it someplace. And as the door starts to swing closed in Derry, the door someplace else needs to open, and this is the, the next best thing. It's not immediately available. As you heard, there's a considerable amount of planning, there's a considerable amount of expense, design, construction, but with the town's great efforts, some serious financial support was obtained federally. We understand the sewer fund is available for these types of projects, and Pillsbury is pulling its oar as well to the tune of a million plus. That's not all that Pillsbury is contributing. Pillsbury also has to have a station within its own properties in Woodmont Commons to pump up to the public station. If it's going to get to an uphill area, it needs to be pushed there. In addition, the land area where the cursor was earlier requires a dedication of land from the Pillsbury Development Company to the town of Lunen Derry. That's also on the table and part of the arrangement. And so everyone's putting in, everyone's getting out, there's a significant amount of public capacity generated in this arrangement, and of course, it allows the vision of Woodmont to move forward. I'm happy to take any questions, but I'll keep it short.
I do have a question, maybe more so for Mr. Malaguti. So, the, the land that the pump station is on, would that be leased to the town of Lunen Derry from...
So, that would be secured by way of easement granted by Pillsbury to the town, in favor of the town of Lunen Derry.
Okay.
Our, our discussions have been a perpetual easement.
Okay. Thank you.
So that's at no cost?
Correct.
Okay.
And then just to confirm, $4 million from the federal government, 2.6 from the town Sewer Enterprise Fund, and then the developer has committed 1.15 plus any...
At least, at least, correct. Exactly.
Plus any overages...
Yes.
That there might, that might incur.
Correct.
Thank you.
So, from a time standpoint, the longer this is delayed, how does that affect now?
Well, that's a great question, and the current answer to that question is, we've been playing a very nice shell game of moving pieces around the board to make sure that the things that we want to see happen sooner than later are fit into the current budget of what goes to Derry.
Okay.
But you're right, we'll, we'll hit the wall, we're hitting the wall, and this is what moves the wall downfield so that we have more development opportunity. You have to put it someplace.
Yep. What's the timeframe for construction?
So, we're looking to bid this, it'd be sometime over the colder months, begin construction next season, and it's a year's worth of construction from start to finish.
Thank you.
So that...
Including an RFP process and acceptance...
And that's an aggressive timeframe.
That is very aggressive.
And that means if, if we hit that wall, it's going to take a year to put that in, and that means, these gentlemen, the developer, it's going to be another two years before you actually see something. And that's why I want to make sure that the residents understand that, you know, as this progresses, it's also going to take some time for the developer to, A, get customers in there, or get other builders in there that are interested. Builders aren't going to, builders aren't going to buy the property, at least the property, if they don't have access to sewer and water.
Yeah.
So, this could delay it even further, and I know there's people have complained at, oh, all we see is mounds of dirt and, and, and empty fields. Well, if we don't get this thing going, we're going to see that longer than you think. That's reality.
And myself being a non-attorney, is there, might be a dumb question, but is there a sunset to this agreement? Like, say, the project takes longer than anticipated? Could, my concern is that the 1.15 plus the additional funds say, say, things take longer than anticipated and that there's an expiration to the contract.
No. And I think Attorney Pollock views this the same way that I do. There, the, the last opportunity that either side has to get out of the agreement is when the bids come in.
Yeah.
And at that point, it becomes a binding agreement going forward with, with respect to both parties.
I agree.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Yes?
All I got to say is, thank you, Mr. Town Manager, for going through this whole process with the document and going through the legal battle back and forth between the state, congressman, and the developers. That's, I think, very impressive.
Thank you, Counselor Combs, and I appreciate the council's support and the close cooperation with, with Woodmont Commons as well.
All right. Accept the motion to approve the funding agreement for signature.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If everyone's affirmative, please move forward. Okay, let's see. Hold on just one second here. So, if you're here for pickleball, if you let me get through this next agenda item, I'll bring pickleball forward. Okay? So, next agenda item is the ARPA funds for, ARPA fund request for the Lions Hall conceptual.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Town Manager. My name is Dave Wally, Director of Public Works and Municipal Facilities, and I'm here to discuss what I consider to be, after discussions with the town manager and members of the community, the next logical progression in step in addressing the Lions Hall. As you've heard, some concerns expressed here tonight, and I've heard many over the course of the last year or so that we've taken possession as we approach that since last September. You know, there's great passion for that building. It has served this community for a great number of years, decades, and arguably even centuries. And, and some of you may have noticed, as the town manager brings a picture of it, we've done some cosmetic appearances out there to kind of clean up the curb appeal, and the Christmas tree corral has been moved, which was partially controversial, but most people understand it, and it's been, we've gotten many, many compliments about how well it looks now with that removed. So, just a little bit of recent history, last October, we did a very good analysis of the building to basically, let us kind of understand, without getting too aggressive and tearing walls apart and whatnot, but, you know, from bringing in different disciplines of engineers to take a look at that. And we've got a pretty good handle on the fact that the building is salvageable. It is in, not in modern standards as far as ADA compliance, electrical needs, HVAC. So if we are going to purpose it for any municipal use, there's a lot of upgrading that needs to, to take place with the facility. And the challenge there is, is that we have a facility that has a lot of emotional connectivity, it has some historic history to it that is very valued, and so how do you mend the two together where you meet today's, you know, standards to be, have it open to the public, but yet preserve the history and the historical look of the building? So, without having a specific useful purpose for the building, there's lots of ideas and there's lots of groups that have interest and lots of people that have interest, and it's going to, you know, be a managing challenge for the town itself if we go down some of these avenues. But what we need to do is look at, at least conceptually, have a vision so that when we do get into actually drafting plans, we are not, that's not what I'm requesting here tonight, but the engineers have a good idea as to what it is we want them to try and give us pricing to. And like, you know, the, the previous presentation, you know, time is of the essence. This building is extremely old, and when you leave a building that old, vacant, for some time without the water on, heat turned down low, air conditioning turned down low, things can deteriorate pretty quickly. We've seen some rodents move in there and some paint peeling and things of that nature, and that will only worsen as time moves on. So, we're trying to move this project forward in a respectful, timely manner and listen to everyone's concerns and, you know, criticisms of what may or may not come with the facility. I will tell you that in my discussion with Weston and Sampson, that, I apologize if there's some language in there that is a little confusing, but anything, any renderings that we bring forward, there's not going to be any real changes to the view. We're not anticipating saying, let's put on a farmer's porch or something like that, or change the appearance in any way. We are kind of looking at ways to make that facility with some great alterations and whatnot, and perhaps re-layout of the parking lot or entrance thereof, so that we can eliminate some very costly mechanical needs as far as access. ADA and getting someone to that first floor, I think people would all agree, we don't want to have some kind of exterior, you know, elevator. We're looking at doing some landscaping that would make the curb appeal certainly more, more eye-pleasing, and really attract and draw some curiosity to, to the facility. It has been used by the community. I think, you know, Lunen Derry Community Center is something that is certainly in need, that's certainly the, the way that it has been utilized for, for a great deal of time, whether it was managed by the Lions Hall or whatnot. Even before that, it was used as the town's town hall, and as Ann appropriately pointed out, it was a, a meeting place, a place that Lunen Derry could come together and, and talk and, and, you know, have conversations and have ideas thought out. And I think that this, this building can still serve that purpose for a lot of people in town. So, the idea is, is to work with Weston and Sampson to embrace some of the ideas that I've been hearing about, some of the sentiments that the town managers received, as well, I'm sure you folks, and, you know, we'd like to kind of get some of that down, a general layout, a look, something that things can be more critiqued. There is an aggressive timeline in here. I, I kind of demanded to them that I wanted them to hit the ground running real fast if this is approved tonight, and come back to me within a month so that we can kind of look at it, move it around, and then bring that before the public and you folks as well, obviously, to say, no, that doesn't look good, this doesn't, and then, so at least that way, we, we kind of... to say, no, that doesn't look good, this doesn't, and then, so at least that way, we, we kind of have an idea. If we move to a design, if that's, uh, what, what the town chooses to do, we, we can kind of move things in a, a better way, a little bit quickly, instead of then, you know, arguing about paint colors and things of that nature. So that's not really what we're, we're looking to do here. It's, it's more of a general layout. In my discussions with them, uh, a lot of my conversations was preserving that building, or even perhaps, um, and this is where, you know, I'm sure the Historic Committee would be excited to help us, you know, bring back some of the, the glamour that that building actually still does, that's hidden underneath the suspended ceilings. There's a lot of things that were kind of put in there because that was the construction materials available at the time and the cheapest way to go. But there's actually a very unique curved ceiling to that Lions Hall, believe it or not, that you can see when you enter that access attic space that, um, people have climbed up in, myself included. So, um, that's what the presentation is for here, a request, rather, for $18,750 to work with Weston and Sampson, continue working with them. And, you know, like, to, to the request, um, the town manager thought it would be prudent to, um, take that allocation out of ARPA funding for the town of Lunandary. And if you have any questions, I can go.
What is the, uh, what is the balance in the ARPA funds?
Uh, probably. I would have given it, uh, an approximate, but $2,413,000? Thirty-two.
All right, thank you.
Do we see going forward, spending potentially more money than this with Sampson?
That's a great question. So, um, I, I understand the value of a tax dollar. I myself live in town, I'm a taxpayer myself. I think the allocation that we did previously in October was around the same amount, gave us a pretty good handle on what that, what the challenges are with that building. I think this next step, um, helps us kind of solidify that. I, I don't think you can find a person in town of Lunandary that says they want to get rid of this building.
No, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm asking is, do we think that they may be tacking on more money eventually down the line? Or is there, are they sticking to these numbers?
So after the conceptual, I mean, usually you kind of do these things all concurrently. We're taking modest steps in that direction, but yes, a design, after this, the next phase is a design. Now, we can do it one of two ways. We can say we want to do a design next, now that we have a conceptual idea of what we want to do, then they can go and make that a reality, and they can design around, around that blueprint, around that look, if you will. If we, they, they believe that, from what they already know of the building and from what we do here, we could potentially, um, say, we've got a good ballpark on what it would take to make that a reality. So we could do the design and the build in the same warrant allocation that we, that we'd want to do. It's aggressive, um, it, it, because, you know, the construction industry is pretty tough to predict right now what's going on.
I'm just impressed with the numbers, considering, you know, working in the construction industry myself, how cheap they're willing to put on this project for architectural, civil, and landscaping design.
Yeah, it, it's, this is not a design. This is just going to be basically, you know, some, some appearances, measuring that building up. It'll help them in their design for sure. They'll know exact square footage. Uh, we're not going to do a certified, you know, plot survey or anything like that. That would be part of a design phase.
Of course, okay.
But this will get us some good visuals that we can bring in, instead of then looking at street view as we are now and understanding, you know, some of the things that we've been talking about is, for example, in the front left corner office of that building, if you will, it probably served as an office one time. That's where the vault is, still remains from when the town hall used it. And, um, but all the HVAC equipment is in there. Now, that's not logically a good spot. So we've been talking about, you know, what if we move the mechanicals to the back? Small addition off the back, what if we put the kitchen back there? Things of that nature, and what would that mean? What would that entail? That would allow us more room in the lobby area to do, uh, the ADA compliant bathrooms that we need, a downsized, uh, scale of a, of a, a call-in elevator, but not your traditional style elevator that you see here. It, it allows us to not have that on the exterior of the building. We're only going two floors rather than land-grade first floor, second floor. So those are the types of things that we want to try to show that this is what we could do to keep costs down. I don't think we want to build a $10 million community center here, but I, I, I think this will get us a good round ballpark number as to where we could be, and then we can see if the taxpayers support that or not.
In the end, I'm still very impressed with the numbers that they were providing.
They, I, I beat them up pretty good. I want them to stay conservative. They're excited about this project. I know we have discussed L-Chip stuff, that's been thrown at me too. I've worked with L-Chip. Uh, it's a long tedious process. It's an important one, but it's more if you're really gonna make it as a, they, they don't want to, L-Chip doesn't want to get into making a historical property into a town community center. That's not kind of, doesn't jive too well, and it's, it's, sometimes it drives cost extensive because of the types of materials that they want you to use and, and whatnot. You can't have vinyl siding, you, you can't do things like that, so.
Quick question, Dave. Would this ARPA money be able to be used for any of the structure? You mentioned like the foundation and the structure, you think you can, we can repair it? Would any of that money be able to be used to fix that? Because I know that's a concern.
Well, this, this ARPA request is just...
Not this one, the, the money that we have, the $2 million, would any of that in the future?
Well, that, the, the, I, I don't, I don't think so. I, well, I, I don't know. The, the financing of it, that's, that's, that's above my grade, but, you know, I would think you're looking at more of a warrant article for something like that.
It would be much more appropriate to take it to the voters and let them decide whether or not they want to fund, you know, this type of a project, which really would be up to them.
Yeah.
I think this was a good start.
Yeah.
One thing we do know is, in these historical properties, when you start to look at them, things are going to pop up. And, you know, it won't surprise me if there's some additional fees, but this is a pretty good start.
Certainly.
So my one question is, is that, you know, um, we, we know there's a river running underneath the building. Yet right now, there's probably a flood under the building, and that, um, but is any type of what they're looking at here going to give us some sort of an idea of what we need from a foundational standpoint?
So, um, some of the grades will certainly help that. Some of the solutions to the floor itself would certainly prevent that, if we go with a flowable fill in there so that we no longer have a crawl space. Like I was explaining earlier today, I was talking to a resident, um, about this facility, and, you know, if we're gonna do things like that to make those corrective measures to keep the water out of the building, then we want to know what kinds of, you know, plumbing do we got to put in the floor? If we're gonna move some bathrooms to the back, or we're gonna move the kitchen? Then, again, this conceptual, you know, would give us, that would give them the information they need to know to, to kind of hit, you know, tell us what we need for the long term for, for this building.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? What do you want to do?
Proceed.
Proceed.
Proceed. All I need is a consensus, Mr. Chairman.
Sounds like you have one.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay, so, ladies and gentlemen, um, we have an agenda item on pickleball. I know some of those folks are here so that they don't have to stay here until, um, who knows how long it's going to take us to get through this agenda tonight, see if we can bring some of that forward, unless anyone has an objection?
Mr. Chair, before we go forward, do we know how many opening seats we have to fill?
It says we have two alternate positions and two full-time positions, according to my agenda.
Thank you.
So I believe there are folks here to be interviewed this evening. I know I have a paper on it here, there's too many papers going right here. So, I have, um, since I butchered their last names, I have Brian and Stephen. Come on up.
And Mr. Chair, there was one other person that wanted to be recognized, Margot.
One other person was Margot.
Ah, yeah.
Margot?
She had put in a...
Yeah, you all come up, can come on up if you like, and introduce yourselves.
Steve Spaziani, I'm at 12 Gary Drive, my wife Margot, also at 12 Gary Drive.
Good to know.
Yeah. It's really, really nice.
I'm Brian Small, my family, and I live at, uh, Moulton Drive, 25 Moulton Drive.
Fantastic. You know, if you, please have a seat, if one of you wants to stay at the podium, we'll interview all three of you at the same time, if that's okay.
Sure. Yeah, we have no idea what to expect, so just have at it.
Well, you're going to be completely in charge of building the courts.
Okay.
And funding.
Great.
And you gotta go out and raise the money for it. No, just, as we saw from the union leader this weekend, um, you know, pickleball has really taken off, not only here in New Hampshire, but in the United States. So we have, um, formed a task force so that we can figure out how to appropriately go forward and, uh, and how to fund it and, and how to do that. So what we're looking for is volunteers like yourself to do that heavy lifting for us so that we can make a decision quickly. We want to try to do something for this budget season, and this budget season starts in first weekend of November. So we're looking to put folks on the task force, we'll help you as much as we can, and hopefully you'll be able to give us an idea of what direction we're going based on in, number of people's input. So if that sounds like something good to you, and, um, you know, we'll continue.
It works for me, yeah, I wouldn't have signed up.
Well, I'll leave it to the councilors if they want to ask you any questions.
Well, there's only three of us in four positions.
Well, there's people who are already appointed on the task force.
There you go.
So, anything for these folks?
I noticed, um, Stephen, you already teach, uh, pickleball as well, and you are already, you both teach as well.
Hampstead Health and Fitness.
You tour all over, and you play at all sorts of different locations.
We do, we're actually in a tournament this weekend up in Exeter, um, and we play, we are getting our teaching and coaching certificate on next week. We have a clinic in Boston that we have to attend. After that, we'll be official certified coaches and trainers.
Is there anything that you're seeing in the various towns that you see that would be, uh, better suited on a pickleball court or an area that, no, you see deficiencies in other areas that you'd like to be good here?
Yeah, so we've actually played in Litchfield, and that's where Brian and I played. We met there, and we played against each other. But we, um, I mean, the first thing we talked about was these great new courts in Litchfield that were full, right next to the two tennis courts, which stayed empty the entire time we were there. And, uh, a few things that were missing, like lights, we talked about, and some, this, uh, pickleball courts have a certain type of finish, court surface, and if you don't protect that finish from people dragging in sand or whatever, it's going to get ruined quick. So we talked about that too. Little things like a, like a welcome mat or something stupid that would just let people brush off their feet, something simple.
Also, where you face the court, you know, you don't want to face east and west because the sun's in your eyes. So there was smart in Litchfield where they did it, north and south.
Right.
They did a really nice job. They, uh, set it up. What they didn't do in Litchfield, which is too bad, is there's not a commu, I mean, one thing about Lunandary, why I moved here from Wyndham many, many years ago, is there's a sense of community here. You know, how we do the, the common concerts and the band supporting, really, right? If we were to build hypothetically a nice pickleball facility that had the, um, portico that's in Derry, but has the size and layout of Litchfield, that's a win-win right there. And speaking of Litchfield, we talked a bit about this.
Yep.
There's a gentleman named Peter Ames, and Peter Ames is in charge of Recreation Department for Litchfield. And I did give him a call last week and spoke to him, how much, how far, how long, how bad. He's willing to share everything with us, do so.
Fantastic, wonderful.
You know, so, yeah, we, we bring, he brings the skills, I bring the connections, we both love the game. Uh, I, I bought a pickleball paddle for my granddaughter on Christmas. She showed up last week as a surprise for her birthday, she's in Florida, and all she wanted to do is play pickleball. Go, go figure.
She win too?
I beat her.
So by next year, you'll be losing, okay.
But that's, the community of this sport is so huge. It's not just competitive, and we are very competitive players, but it's fun. And if you lay it out right and you have some kind of a place where people can set up picnic tables, this can be a big deal. And a lot of fun for our, our community, and that's kind of why I want to help you out.
In the surrounding towns that you've also been to, how many, I guess, courts are there usually that you see?
Okay, Nashua has, um, eight, nope, 10. Uh, four, four lit, the Shady Lanes, those six are lit, they're fairly new. Greeley Park, a converted tennis courts, they have four courts there that are lit. Fields Grove are not lit, but they're resurfacing them right now, there's four courts there. Derry has two dedicated courts and one at, um, at AC Park, and then there's one at Hood, that that's a converted tennis court, it works okay, but the net's a little high, anyway. What else is there? Manchester, there's eight, I'm sorry, 12 courts, six at Prout and six at Rock Remen.
Yeah.
We play there. Hampstead is building a new facility, I don't know if you're aware of that. Ted Curtin owns the Salem Athletic Club as well as Hampstead Health and Fitness. He's building 603 Pickleball, which is 12 courts, six indoor. I'm sorry?
Six indoors.
Six indoor, six outdoor. Uh, we already teach for him, um, and we are planning on teaching there at that facility. He's hoping to host, um, big, big
Professional tournaments.
Professional tournaments. And, uh, there's six in Concord that we play over at the Steeplegate Mall, you might have seen it in the paper. And that's a guy named Peter that we play with, um, and he's running that right now.
I guess what I'm trying to say is, we have a good sense for what we want with the...
Yeah, this, this four in Atkinson that are new, and two are dedicated now, they just finished those a couple of weeks ago.
That's great.
And so, and Salem has courts, you know, there's a bunch around.
Did I send you the plans to?
Yes.
Was it Groton or Littleton?
I think it was Littleton.
Littleton?
I, I thought so.
Yeah, they were building six outdoor courts.
There's a lot, Rye.
All the towns across the north are building them too, from what I've seen.
I'm sorry?
All the towns across the north are building them as well.
Yeah, they are, and if you look, if you drive by a tennis facility, there's going to be pickleball players on it. It's kind of sad, I grew up with tennis and racquetball, so it's different.
Yeah. So, I'll accept a motion.
I will make a motion to approve, um...
All three?
All three.
Well, all three, but we need to put two as full-time members.
Who wants to be the alternate?
The alternate.
You'll be the alternate?
So I will make a motion to appoint Brian, um, I will not butcher your name, and Stephen Pizzani for the full-time positions, and, um, Brian's wife, I forget your name.
Steven's wife.
Steven's wife, sorry.
It's all right.
Uh, what was your name?
Margot.
Margot for the alternate position that we have open.
Second.
Those in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair, what's affirmative? See the town clerk and be sworn in.
Yeah. Um, I have one question.
Sure.
If we do get another alternate, are we allowed to bring that person forward to talk to you about it?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Fantastic, thank you. Alrighty, um, next item, order 2023-06, um, so Brad, where are you? Licensing of junkyard, uh, pursuant to RSA 236. So I have got, um, Murray's Auto as well as, I believe I should have SNS Metals too, right?
Yes, sir.
Murray's Auto, SNS Metals. Those are the only two left. Okay, if you want to speak to both of them, Brad, that'd be great. So we're going to cover 20, 202306 and 202307.
Brad Anderson, Assistant Billing Inspector for the Town of Lunandary. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Councilman. Inspection of the subject junkyard of Murray's Auto Recycling at 55 Hall Road on June 5th, 2023, determine compliance with license conditions on preparation for renewal. The applicant continues to work with DES to maintain compliance and the recommended best management practices. During my visit appeared that Mr. Dudick is following proper best management practices. On occasion, I would make unannounced visits, and I would find the fencing would be down and cars occasionally would be stacked higher than they should be. The problems that he was having, what he told me, was the, the thrasher, shredder, rather, uh, from Schnitzer located in Everett, Massachusetts. The big machine would be breaking. So I asked him to get me a letterhead from Schnitzer with the dates when they were down, and he submitted that to me. Based on the recent inspection and other revisits properly during the year, it appears the applicant is operating within the requirements of their license and renewal of the license is recommended.
So let's hear about SNS Metals, and then I'll go to questions, if that's okay.
Yeah. For SNS Recycling, inspection on the junkyard was also conducted on June 5th. Determine compliance with the license conditions and preparation for renewal. The applicant continues to work with the DES to maintain compliance with the recommended best management procedures. Due to the nature of the junkyard operation as determined by DES, Mr. Salamini also operates as a metal recycling facility for the non-automatic, automotive metals received in this site. No adverse square conditions were observed during the inspection and would prohibit the renewal of his license. Previous on unannounced visits to Mr. Salamini's junkyard, I would find the vehicles parked too close to the road and the aisleways blocked up where the fire trucks would be, have difficult time getting into it. I addressed them to Mr. Salamini, and within days, he had the issues fixed. Based on the recent inspection and other visits to the property during the year, it appears that the applicant is operating within the requirements of their license, renewal of the license... of the license is recommended.
Questions?
Brad, thank you for your presentation. A couple of questions. You mentioned some violations during the duration in between the last inspection with, or with your unannounced inspections. Specifically, you mentioned regarding the facility on Hall Road, vehicle, the issue with the fencing and the cars. And then the SNS you mentioned, vehicles too close to the road and fire lanes, stuff like that. I did hear, I believe I heard you say regarding SNS metals, that within a couple of days of you bringing the issue or addressing the issue, they then again became compliant with the rules, laws and regulations. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. And then you stated regarding the Hall Road location, Murray's Auto, fencing the cars, which you had stated that there was, you asked for Schnitzer, is that correct?
Yes, it's Schnitzer. Schnitzer thrashing, I think they, they thrashed the cars.
Yeah.
They picked them up, they, they thrash them down in Everett.
Did you, did you see, did you notice that the dates that they stated that their machine was inoperable was concurrent with the dates that you noticed, the violations of the rules?
I did. And they, and they were very close. And at first, when they started the machine back up again, when they fixed that machine, the cars in Murray's junkyard remained piled higher than they should be. I went down and talked to Mr. Ed Dudek about that and to find out why. And he said, it's because everybody is backed up. So all the people that, other people that bring the cars there as well are also backed up. So it's a slower process bringing the cars through and eventually the cars didn't go down. Yes.
And it, as of right now, it's corrected?
Yes.
For both locations?
Yes.
Okay. So in the, and you recommend approval for both?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, I have a couple of questions about Murray's.
Yes.
It's a non-conforming property, correct?
I'm, I'm not sure of that, sir.
Meaning that it's, I believe it's in a residential area and it has certain restrictions. One of them is, are auctions, are auctions allowed to happen on that property?
I do not know.
Or what? Auctions? Auctions? I don't know. Because I, I believe that they're not allowed, but they have been happening, is what I'm being told. So I didn't know if you checked into that at all.
I have heard of auctions. I've had complaints of auctions that happened on that property. I have investigated those complaints in the past. I have not heard that recently, but I've heard them in the past. I've gone to inspect that and I've had no proof, no evidence.
There was an advertisement in the London Dairy Times for an auction back in May. It's just rare. No, I didn't know if you.
Nope.
If that was allowed or not. Are vehicles allowed to be parked overnight on the Murray's Auto site outside of the gate?
The, the employees' vehicles may be parked there.
Okay. What about a box truck that was parked there from May, middle of May until almost end of June?
Middle of May, the box truck.
It was a big box truck?
There was a fire truck.
It was there about a month.
There was a fire truck that was there.
This is just in the past since May.
Okay. Well. I don't recall a fire truck being there since.
And then just to add on to that, right now, there's a vehicle parked right now, today, outside the thing. I just didn't know if that's allowed. I just wanted to know if that's allowed or not.
The owner's vehicles.
It's not, I don't think it's the owner's vehicle, but I just was curious.
How would anybody know whether it's the owner's vehicle or not? Just asking. I don't know. I don't know how anybody would know if it's the owner's vehicle or not.
Ron, is this something you're witnessing?
Yeah, I actually drove by. I had, I had a resident contact me about some of these issues and I drove by too.
So you went down there and found the box truck?
I actually have a picture of the box truck.
So was this reported to the building department that it was there?
I believe it was reported. I can confirm that later, but I, I just didn't know. I just, I was trying to get information as to whether or not.
I've never heard anything about a box truck.
It is or not, that's all.
All right, so.
I'm just trying to get information whether or not it is or not.
Stan, but if, but if the violations are not reported, you know, they, there's, there's no evidence of it if they're not reported. I mean, it's, you know, if they're violations and they're reported, he should have a log of those violations.
What would be the proper way for a resident to report that to you?
They can call the building department. They can, and you can actually, you can access my extension 108.
Okay.
Leave a message. You can send me an email. My email is on the website.
Okay.
Come in, you can come into the department. Excuse me, as well. And you could also fill out a formal complaint.
There used to be a thing you could do online. Is that going to come back at any time soon where you could fill out a form online and it'd be recorded?
I don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? No public comment?
There is, I'm wrong.
No, there is no public comment. Public comment is closed. Sir, if you do it again, I'm going to ask you to leave. You've been told multiple times.
You're wrong.
I don't, sir, as long as I'm sitting here running this meeting, those are the rules. If you don't like it, you can leave.
You can't break state law.
Sir, you can leave if you're going to continue to disturb this meeting.
John, there is an RSA that he did bring to my attention. I don't know if that impacts. I'm just stating the fact.
We are not taking public comment.
Okay.
You, if you want to, you can leave, sir.
You know that there was a court that you filed with the courts?
Sir.
You're aware of that?
Sir, you can leave, sir.
No, you're, what you're doing, John, is you're not doing your job.
Sir, you're, you're out of order. Sir, you're out of order. Sir, you're out of order.
No, John, you can't do your job.
Sir, you're out of order. Please leave.
You're getting a problem, lady? No, we can't. No. Because if this goes worse, you're, I'm going to sue the town because you're breaking RSA again and ignoring court orders where you filed with courts.
I, thank you. Good night.
You've got a real problem, John. And they've been unlicensed for 10 days.
Good night.
Mr. Chairman, can I just inquire of Counselor Dunn what that RSA is?
Yeah.
Governing the.
Yeah, he sent it to me. So, what do you guys want to do? You have two, two orders out.
Make a motion that we pass them. Well.
I just wanted to put eyes on this RSA first to make sure that we're not.
I retract that motion until the town manager gets what he needs.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just take a look at that?
Yeah.
This is what he sent to me earlier.
And who sent it to you, Ron?
Richard Balinski.
Oh, Richard.
He sent it to me earlier. I just don't want us to be in trouble if it's something that we need to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I trust you.
Do you want to pin this and move on the agenda, Mr. Chair?
Um, he's looking at something. We'll have to pay attention if we move on.
Fair enough.
Aaron, we'll go into recess for five minutes.
I forgot to put the horse in.
Okay, we are now back in session.
Can you go and put the horse in?
Okay.
All you have to do is just put, and if you need a little enticing.
Unfortunately, John.
All right, I got a call.
Can you put the horse back in the barn now?
Yeah. Thank you. I appreciate it. Sorry about that, Johnny.
Unfortunately, due to the multiple disruptions that have been happening during our meetings and everything, when people are doing those, they're asked to leave. And it, and it's a sad state of the fact that that's what has to happen sometimes when people don't want to, you know, follow the rules that are in place. With regards to the license, if there's anyone else who is in the room who would like to speak to either one of these licenses, we will entertain their comment. If there's not, we're going to move forward. Seeing no comments. How would you like to proceed?
I will motion to approve both licenses as the town inspector has now found a default to move forward.
I'll second it. I'll do it formally. So, Ms. Chair, I'd like to approve order number 2023-06 and order number 2023-07. A motion.
I need a second.
Second.
Did you want to say something?
I just wanted to know if there was a way we could get clarification on those couple issues before we move forward. Like, are there, are there vehicles allowed to be parked outside there or are they not? And is he allowed to have auctions? Because they definitely had an auction.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, because he.
I could, I could speak to those.
Yeah, please. Because I definitely know that it was added in London Dairy Times for an auction.
Yes. So, there's a letter dated November 23rd, 2021, addressed to and a butter, that I spent a significant amount of time researching this. This was before I was the town manager. I think it would be of interest to the council and to anybody who was interested in this exchange that's just occurred. But what I can tell you is this, it addresses most of these issues. It addresses the, the vehicle issue that you raised, Counselor Dunn. Vehicles are not permitted to be parked outside in general. And if I can just read, because I don't have this fresh in my memory, but it's pertinent to your, your question. As we discussed, on this particular occasion, a code enforcement officer was not able to substantiate the fire truck being there when he visited the property and it appears it has been removed. A code enforcement officer then spoke to Murray about, Murray's about the fire truck. You also provided a picture of a van and a flatbed truck parked in the lot. The van was there continuously for a period of time. I have driven, driven by the property twice during the day and did not make those observations. However, I do not doubt that what, what your, what this resident was telling me was correct. As we discussed, documenting violations is challenging because oftentimes, this would be overnight when the code enforcement officer isn't necessarily working. We sent a letter at this time reminding Mr. Dudek of his obligations under the applicable court order. And I asked in the future that the resident report these violations directly to the code enforcement officer in real time, which will help us address and enforce this, this provision. As far as the barn being grandfathered is concerned, this is a bit of a complex legal analysis, but basically, the barn, there was a, as you pointed out, a junkyard operation that was taking place there going back quite, quite a ways. And that was documented in litigation between the town and Mr. Dudek. That operation that was taking place out in the open was at a certain point in time moved indoors into a barn. There was, there was some consideration given at the ZBA to whether this constituted an expansion of a non-conforming use or a grandfathering, I think, as you, as you pointed out. And that was discussed by the ZBA. There was legal advice that was given from town council. And it was determined that even if there had been a non-expansion, it was slight and it was slight and it was sort of unnatural and in keeping with the existing use of the structure and therefore permissible. It was, and what I wrote on that point in my letter of November of '21 was, instead of outdoor, open-air junkyard operations, those same operations, in other words, the same use, were moved indoors to an improved and more efficient or different instrumentality. That's the language that the cases use to talk about this natural, you know, slight expansion. However, the use of the property is the same. That is a natural expansion and was regarded by the environmental regulators as preferable to conducting those operations outside. As far as, I think the other issue that you raised was the-
The auctions.
The auctions. Auctions are not permitted here. If, to my knowledge, that's my best memory, I don't think I addressed it in this, in this letter, but auctions are not permitted here. If somebody has evidence that an auction is taking place, I encourage them to report that to the code enforcement office in the same fashion, and that will be looked into. I can also point out, to address the council's concerns, that, you know, Mr. Dudek is getting a free ride here. I would like to just, I'd like the chairman's indulgence to just read from a letter of December 29th that was delivered on behalf of the town to Mr. Dudek. "Mr. Dudek, the town has received satisfactory evidence that on December 7th, 2021, the above referenced property was in violation of RSA 236123, which requires a junkyard to be, quote, substantially screened, close quote. A copy of a photograph documenting the violation is enclosed with this letter. I am aware this violation has occurred periodically over the years. I am also aware that in 2015, the town wrote to you noting the same issue, stating, quote, 'The town council is aware that this is not the first time that your junkyard has failed to comply.' I continued to talk about what the penalties were for non-compliance with the statute. This shall constitute a written notice of the violation. Please be advised that a daily civil penalty of $275 for the first offense and $550 for a subsequent offense will begin to accrue until this violation is rectified, should the town commence an enforcement action. I reminded Mr. Dudek that the burden of complying with the terms of your license, state law, and the court orders entered against you is on you. It is not the town's obligation to remind you of this obligation to comply. Accordingly, please be advised that with respect to recurring issues in the future, it is the town's intention to address these issues this way. One, there will be no further 30-day notices with opportunity to cure the violation. Two, the town will commence enforcement action. And three, all future violations will be tracked and presented to the town council. Additionally, the town has received numerous complaints about a vehicle being left out front without a front plate overnight. While the town has not at this time substantiated this complaint, you were advised that the front lot is not to be used for storage." I say all of that just to amplify the point that I just made, which is that there are no free rides here. The town takes this seriously. I have, this is my file on Hall Road. I have spent dozens of hours on the phone with a local concerned resident. And I think that it sounds like, based on the visits that our code enforcement officer has made, that message has been received by the applicant, but all of that is what has happened in the past. And I hope that addresses the concerns.
It does. The only thing that I can address with my own eyes today is that there was an auction that took place on May 28th at 8:15 a.m. It was a 2028 Subaru Silver.
Do you know if this auction took place online?
I don't know, sir. I just have the picture of the ad, that's all I know. So I just didn't know-
So we don't know if it took place there. We don't know that it took place online. Nobody was there to witness that the auction took place.
I just know that he put an ad in the paper for it, so.
We can certainly look into that, Mr. Chairman. The other thing I would note about the gentleman from the public raising, asking the council if the council's aware that something was filed with the court, but the court doesn't have it. Something, I'm here to tell you something was filed with the court, in terms of an enforcement document. And I'm also here to tell you that the court doesn't have it. Again, I was a prosecutor for four years. The court misplaces things that are filed. That happens. And so, I can personally attest to the fact that something was filed with the court seeking enforcement action. Again, speaking to how seriously the town takes this, the court lost it. Nobody is, nobody is lying, nobody is corrupt. That's just what happened. And so, all of that is to say that Mr. Dudek has taken these concerns to heart. It's the council's decision whether to license him or not license him. But I can tell you that the town staff is not shrugging this off and takes this just as seriously as the residents do.
And in addition to that, there is a court order that's been in place almost six years that makes Mr. Dudek comply to every piece of his license and everything. And in accordance with the court order, if he violates it, the court can make the decision to pull his license. We have spent tens of thousands of dollars in legal fees to make sure that Mr. Dudek complies with his license. Tens of thousands of dollars. So, anyone who's saying that we're corrupt, taking money on his side, is speaking with forked tongue.
I just said that to me, I just, I just got those, I just got those couple pieces of information, that's all I had. I don't know anything about anything else.
The point I would emphasize is timely notification to the code enforcement department is the only way that these issues can be addressed.
I have a motion on the floor, and a second. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Chair votes affirmative, license passes. Okay, next item. All right, so Justin, if we can take both of these, 2023-08 and 2023-09.
I think there should be a third one as well. 2023-12.
Yep, 2023-12, yeah, we can take, we'll take all three of them at once.
Perfect. So, 2023-08 is a withdrawal from the Recreation Capital Reserve Fund. We are requesting 5,000 out of the fund to help assist purchase a diesel mower. We put this out to bid back in May. We received four bids. We're going with a diesel mower from, I believe it's Turf Pro. And the remaining will come from the recreation's operating budget.
Any, go ahead and do all three, then I'll do questions.
Perfect. The next one is a withdrawal from the capital reserve for the cable equipment. This is the school district's annual request. You'll see a list of the expenses that they'll be utilizing this on. Per RP, Public Access Agreement with Comcast, we received $32,500. Eight thousand of that is earmarked for the school district to upkeep their public access. And the last one is unanticipated revenue for fiscal year '23. This is for the rabies clinic. Boat equipment donated $500 to the police department. And the last one is Health Trust Wellness. They give us, they give the town, police, fire, and town hall $500 for maintaining healthy items throughout the town and helping with the health and mental wellness of the town, fire, and police.
Any questions on any one of these three orders? Seeing none, I'll accept the motion to approve 08, 09, and 12.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 2023-08, 09, and 12.
Second. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. I am, we're on to order, thank you, Justin, 2023-10.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. John Trotter, Director of Engineering and Environmental Services for the Town of Londonderry. I'm here this evening to request the withdrawal from the roadway maintenance trust fund in the amount of $557,000 for repairs and improvements to various town roads in the, in Town of Londonderry. For our shimming overlays and some of the reconstruction of a number of roadways here in town.
Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Please proceed.
Which roads are you going to be looking to be doing?
This year, Ted, what we have on the list, portions of, excuse me, South Road from Gilcrest to Kendall Pond Road, portions of Harvey Road, High Range, portions of High Range, Shasta from Mammoth to High Range. We reconstructed Sunrise this past spring. We have Otterston, portions of Otterston, some roads within the Kings, Hillside Ave from the town line to Londonderry Road, Webster Road and Parmenter Road from 102 to Boyd Road. So, again, each of them, they all come in different costs. Some of them have curbing, some of them have structures that need to be raised. So it's a hard, hard thing to say it's, you know, $10 per linear foot for each of these roads.
It's impressive what you're able to do with such little money. Mr. Chair, I know this is not purview to this order, but may I ask when he may be getting to other roads?
Bancroft Road?
Yeah.
Well, he doesn't live on that street anymore, so now he can ask about it.
Oh, you don't?
No.
Oh, the, no, I, I'm just kidding.
Or will that be, or will work, would that be in conjunction with the new sewer pipe?
No, again, the sewer pipe will be on a northerly port, or, excuse me, the easterly portion of that, so that the sewer goes, comes out of the power lines-
Yes.
-head, heads east, heads westerly down the road and then goes cross-country.
Okay.
Problem with Bancroft Road is, again, it's full depth reconstruction of that roadway. So again, with the limited funds, I got to keep the good roads good and wait till I get the money to, another million dollars to be able to do that portion of Bancroft Road.
Yes, I'm just concerned as it's a high-traffic road that, you know, it's just seeming to get worse and worse.
Totally understand.
Hopefully, in the future, it might be looked at for reconstruction at some point.
It is on the list. Again, it's just, it's like the Harvey Road-
Our 100, 200-year list?
Yeah, it's like the Harvey Road Culvert, when you only get $600,000 a year, and it's 1.5 million to repair it. And then maintaining the other 191 miles of road, the juggling act.
The good news is, Mr. Chairman, if I may, Counselor Comes, that as Representative McDonald pointed out, we got another one-time infusion of highway funds from the state this year. So, the first one of almost a million dollars that we got last year wasn't, wasn't a one-time thing. Hopefully, there's an emerging understanding at the state level that we really need some help. And I think our representatives understand that. I spoke to Senator Carson about it as well. So those dollars really do matter when it comes to some of these projects.
Wonderful, thank you.
Real quick, Mr. Chair, can we direct the town manager that, just to have these towns that Mr. Trotter was talking about reflected in the minutes, please?
You mean the roads?
Roads.
Roads, I'm sorry. The roads that are being repaired with the 557,000, maybe in the recorded-
Yeah, I think we actually have the roads on the website that are being done, right?
That's perfect.
So if we could, you know, they're already-
We just didn't get a list in our minutes here.
Yeah, they just, yeah, if they can just make sure that she adds them to the minutes.
I will.
Yeah, they're published on the website already.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt order number 2023-10.
Second.
All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Order 2023-11, order relative distribution of fire department capital reserve funds. Chief Holloway.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, the members of the council before you this evening for requests for $41,647.19 for approximately 10 sets of firefighting gear. I think you'll recall, I've been in front of you a couple of times now. The fire department's operating budget includes a safety line of approximately $20,000, which historically, many years ago, was enough to purchase 10 sets of structural firefighting gear per year. But due to rising costs of other safety-related items, such as the repair and maintenance of fire gear, testing of ladders, pumps, and a number of other things, the money just doesn't suffice any longer. You know, just to give you an idea, we have approximately 60 firefighters, 60 operating on the fire ground, or could be in a fire ground. They each get two sets of firefighting gear. So, we've got about 120 sets of gear to the tune of just about, just under $300,000 worth of firefighting ensembles that we maintain. So when you put it in that perspective, the 41,000 that we're requesting this year doesn't sound as bad, but over the last three years, I've been before you for 56, 36, and now 41. We're kind of diversifying our gear acquisition a little bit. Historically, we've always gone with an organization called Globe, which manufactures up in Pittsfield, New Hampshire. But after the pandemic, there's been some supply and demand issues, and we found ourselves waiting a year-plus to purchase firefighting gear. Another company, which is out of Ohio called Fire Dex, has been a rising star. And we've done some wear trials with their gear, and we've been pretty satisfied with them. So I think from an asset management standpoint, diversification is good because it doesn't pigeonhole us to just one set of structural gear. The company, Fire Dex, is able to produce gear for us in about six to 10 weeks right now. And the quality is just as good, if not better, than the stuff that we get from Globe. But, you know, out of an interest in diversification, we're also continuing to purchase sets of gear from Globe as well. So we're doing five this year from Fire Dex and five from Globe.
Any questions? I'll accept the motion to approve order number 11. Make a motion.
So moved.
Second. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you for your support.
Okay, item number 10 on new business. Assessing Department, 2023 Revaluation Project Analysis and Preliminary Report.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Thank you so much. I'm going to be as brief as I possibly can. My name is Steve Hamilton.
Hi, Steve.
I am the assessor for the town. My company is Whitney Consulting Group. I have a contract with the town. With me this evening is Adrian Summers. Adrian is the assistant assessor for the town, a town employee. We work together on a lot of projects very closely. Our teams, the town employees and the Whitney Consulting Group employees are interchangeable as team members in the assessing role and function. But I wanted to bring Adrian here tonight, especially to introduce you to her and her to you as she is the head employee within the assessing function here in Londonderry.
Thank you.
Quickly. Every, every town has to do a revaluation at least every five years. The last time that we did a revaluation here in Londonderry was 2021. The town council has determined that it's appropriate to do these revaluations every two years. And so, this is the next natural point at which we would want to examine the assessment performance and show you what will be anticipated for the revaluation this year in 2023. We need to be able to bring market, properties to market value. And in the assessing world, that means attaining a ratio, an assessment to sales ratio of between 90 and 110% of market value. And so that's the range that equals market value. As we did in the last revaluation, we, we tried to target a ratio. We, in the last, last revaluation, we, we had scoped out a target of between 90 and 95% of market value to try and be within that range, to keep us within the 90 to 110% range, but to leave some room for any error to be below the 100% of market value. DRA, the Department of Revenue Administration in the state, they conduct an overall median ratio study annually. The last time that they completed that was for April 1st of 2022. The ratio, that relationship between assessments and market value had dropped to 77.3 over the two-year period since the last revaluation. And so, as of April 1st, 2022, the sale prices were approximately 29% higher than the current, than assessments. When we're looking at the sales that are, have occurred most recently, they're about in that range, at about 76% now. We think that a town-wide reassessment is an important thing to undertake at this time in order to keep those market values current. And like I said, we're going to be targeting between 90 and 95% of market value in order to hit within that range of 90 to 110%, while staying well away from the 110%. uh, while staying well away from the hundred and ten end of that range. Um, the, some good news is that, uh, we have a good, uh, distribution of, uh, changes in, uh, market value. Uh, the preliminary analysis that we've completed of five hundred and six qualified sales, um, in the year preceding, uh, April first of two thousand twenty-three, um, shows that all property is at seventy-six percent, as I mentioned, single-family homes are at seventy-six percent. Condom mediums are at seventy-seven percent. Manufactured housing units or mobile home units are at sixty-four percent. Uh, they have been the most impacted by the shortage of affordable housing units within, uh, not only Londonderry, but the greater state. They have seen, uh, very significant increases in the value of those units. Um, and importantly, commercial property, um, is showing to, to be in the same range. I'm not sure that sixty-eight percent is gonna be the final tally. Uh, we still have work to do to understand some of the sales that occurred. Commercial property sales can often include a lot of manufacturing equipment and other things that we can't tax as real estate. And so the final result may be different than our preliminary analysis, but, um, overall, uh, the coefficient of dispersion, which is the measurement, uh, if you were looking at, uh, an archery target, uh, it would be the rings from the center of the target. Uh, we wanna see those be greater than five. You don't want them too tightly dis- um, distributed because that would indicate maybe, um, that we were cheating in some way, um, and less than twenty. So at eleven already, uh, based on the model that we put in place in two thousand twenty-one, it's still performing pretty well. What that means is that there'll be less, um, modulation between the different classes of property, um, in the changes in value. It will be much more uniform this time than it had been in two thousand twenty-one. In two thousand twenty-one, there was a lot of, uh, changeable, uh, percentages of value. Everybody's individual assessment is gonna be adjusted to account for the changes in real estate, um, value for their property. Um, and when we complete that, an important part of it is what happens to, uh, elderly and disabled, uh, property values, because uh, we need to make sure that the amount of exemptions that are granted, um, helps to stay up-to-date with market value. And so we'll be completing a full analysis of what will happen, uh, to the impact of elderly and disability tax exemptions that are granted. Um, our goal is always to try and make sure there's the same bang for the buck for, uh, the people who receive, uh, the exemptions on property. Everybody's situation is a little bit different, but we try to make sure that overall there's a, uh, similar, um, effect on people's, um, tax bill. We're gonna present, present you, um, at the time that our analysis is, is complete, a full, uh, analysis and projection of what those changes should be.
Before we send them out to the residents. Before we send them out to the residents. So in other words, we're gonna reevaluate people. You're gonna come and give us an analysis of what it might look like before we notify the residents what the revaluation is.
We can give you every single, we can give you a report of every single value in the community.
Just so, I don't want people to be surprised by, like, they get their, they get their bill and they go, I went up fifty thousand dollars. And I do understand that, we understand that the tax rate will go down a certain amount as well.
Right.
But I just wanna make sure we're as absolutely explaining it the best we possibly can before we send the bill out.
We have a great process for that, and you may remember from, uh, the last revaluation in two thousand twenty-one, we send out a notice to every single taxpayer, um, during the summer. We invite them to come in and talk to us at what we call an informal hearing. It's a process by which they can talk to me or one of the other, uh, appraisers who valued the property and get a full understanding of, of how we came up with their, uh, their assessment. And we make those values available on our website for everybody in the town to look at, not only what their assessment is, but what their neighbors' assessments are. So everybody has a good, uh, level of understanding. So we'll, we'll be doing that entire process, again, uh, this year. Um, and it includes, um, it includes making that, uh, communication here to the council, um, of what the individual results are. Uh, we can provide you each with, um, either printed or in electronic form, uh, whatever is your preference. I did wanna talk a little bit about, uh, because there has been, um, question at a couple of meetings about uh, the amount of exemption that is granted to the eighty-plus category, um, of age, and the, the question was raised as to, um, what, what would happen if the town, uh, like the town of Wyndham, uh, determined that once you reach the age of eighty, uh, then the exemption would be the full value of your, uh, property. Um, I've done some, um, preliminary analysis of what the impact of that might have been in two thousand twenty-one. We don't have values right now, so it's, it's impossible for us to, uh, determine what it would be in two thousand twenty-three. But if we look back to two thousand twenty-one and what the, um, what the category ranges were in two thousand twenty-one, uh, there were a total of seventy-nine people in that age category, um, in two thousand twenty-one. Thirty people in that category paid no taxes at all because the value of their home was less than the exemption amount. And so, um, uh, you know, thirty-eight percent of that seventy-nine, uh, person population, they didn't pay taxes at all. Um, the forty-nine people that were in that category that did pay taxes, if, uh, they had the rest of their value exempted, uh, that would have been a total of five million, three hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred dollars of exemption. That's additional exemption that would have been granted, um, under the, uh, under the theory that every, every piece of the value would be exempted.
So that'd be about three point eight percent of our total revenue.
Uh, not, not, that would be value, and so that would convert into about ninety-eight thousand dollars in revenue based on the tax rate.
Okay, I misunderstood you. I thought you were saying five million dollars, okay.
Yeah, you, you, you got it.
Okay.
That would be about, uh, one point nine cents on the, on the tax rate. That would be about the impact would have been in two thousand twenty-one.
Gotcha.
Okay.
If that makes sense. Um, and so that's.
Can you, um, is there any way to look at an analysis that, based on the number of, uh, fifty-five and elders we now have in the community, what a projection like that may look like out into the future? Now that we have about nine hundred homes that are fifty-five and older? I mean, I, I know that, I'm not asking you to do it tonight, and I'm not asking you to do it for this year, but I'm just asking you to think about it.
I, I think about it.
Alter's our decision.
Yeah, and, and, uh, Mr. Chair, I think about it all the time because, um, we, we have, we have two things, two conflicting, um, concepts, uh, when people get to, uh, the age of retirement. Um, one is, you know, it's, it's a great time to relax and enjoy life, and the other is, at some point, they start to think, um, I want to make this, I wanna make some financially responsible decisions for my future, and they start to, uh, plan their estate in ways that changes the way that they might be able to interact with this kind of an ownership, um, based exemption program. So, one way that, uh, people, uh, look forward to limiting the exposure to, um, the expense of maybe a nursing home at some point in the future is to place property into irrevocable, uh, real estate trust, and, which is a great vehicle to protect it in that way, but it also distances themselves from the ownership of the property, which generally, unless they've carefully planned for it, um, is going to eliminate them from being able to get an exemption, uh, because of the ownership.
Understood.
Situation, so, um, and we, we also wanna make sure, we have, we have a great set of, uh, people who, um, regularly, uh, apply for and are requalified for these exemptions that they get. Uh, but, um, we also don't wanna make sure that we have too big a pile of, uh, candy sitting out there uh, for people that, that may not be, um, in, in the future as scrupulous about reporting their income and assets as they are right now. So we don't wanna create, uh, you know, a negative, an incentive for a negative, uh, reaction. Um, and that would, of course, really kick up the cost of, uh, of that kind of a program. Um, so, that's, um, in a nutshell, what we think would have happened in two thousand twenty-one. It gives you some sense of it, and when we get, um, to the point where we have values completed and we pro- provide the, um, evaluation of what we think, um, reasonable adjustments would be, we'll also include that calculation of what a full exemption at age eighty would be.
Thank you. Any questions? So we'll look forward to you coming back and giving us the same, um, um, advanced look that the, the taxpayers are going to get to understand, you know, what might be forthcoming in the December bill.
I look forward to it.
Mr. Chair.
But was there, only, only a tax assessor could say he looks forward.
Honestly say that.
So are we going to have him come back November or October?
Well, when he's, when he's ready.
Okay, I guess.
He's, well, he's gotta be ready before budget.
I underst- I understand.
So.
I guess the better question is for him is, do you have an idea when you'll be ready?
Well, we anticipate that we'll be ready to send out the informal notices to taxpayers within a three or four-week, uh, timeframe, so.
From now?
Yeah.
Hold on.
So we're gonna be, um.
So that people understand, because everyone will start to talk about that, like, well, what if the market dips? That's why we're looking at it again in two years.
Right.
So that we're not doing it over a five-year period anymore. We're doing it to be more
Stabilizing.
stabilizing with the economy and with the market.
Correct. And based on the preliminary analysis that we've done, uh, the market, um, is the, the rate of increase is moderating. So, um, and that's, that's a good thing, and it, it may even bring a plateau along with it, but for, uh, the, the last few months, since April first, uh, things have been relatively very flat, so, and that's, that's a healthy thing for the real estate market and for people who are hoping to break into it especially.
And just to confirm, this is residential properties only?
No, this is all property.
All property.
I know.
Yeah, so when you come, when you complete it, if you, we usually have some sort of an idea of whether we're sixty, forty, or forty-five, fifty-five, with commercial being forty-five and residential being fifty-five. If you can give us some sort of an idea of where we're at, that would be great, too.
We can give you a summary of, by category of, of all of the values.
That'd be great. All right, and you all understand that commercial properties don't fluctuate the same way residential properties fluctuate, okay. Everybody understands that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, next item, number eleven, resolution two oh two three dash one four, uh, relative to establishing Londonderry Community Response Team Program.
Mr. Chairman, very simple, uh, we have a, uh, an alert, uh, team. Um, those team members get deployed periodically. Mr. Sapec came to me and said, hey, uh, we really should, uh, formalize this to make sure that, uh, there isn't any question, uh, that if something were to happen to one of our alert volunteers, they would be covered under our insurance. That's the, uh, purpose of the resolution that you have in front of you. Um, uh, I'm happy to take, and I'm sure Mr. Sapec is happy to take any questions that the council has.
Any questions? I'll accept the motion to approve two oh, where is it, two oh?
Two oh two three dash one four. So moved.
Second.
Was in favor, someone by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Thank you to the alert team for everything you did.
Very much so.
And I should note, Mr. Forten is here as well, uh, so thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, discussion on proposed conservation easement, map lot, map seventeen, lot ten.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I'm joined by Marge Bedoya, the chair, uh, of the Conservation Commission on this as well, um, and, again, this is something that I've spoken, uh, with Mr. Speltz about. This is something that, uh, the planning department has provided, uh, some assistance on, um, and it is this. Uh, and I would invite, uh, at the chair's discretion, Ms. Bedoya, to jump in if I should get any of this, uh, wrong. The, we, it has been a lot of discussion about development in the north part of town, um, and one of the, uh, remaining undeveloped areas is, uh, about twenty-two acres, uh, that's known as map seventeen, lot ten. Um, the, this is part of, uh, the Merrill Farm area, although it is mostly forested, um, and there is some wet, uh, to, to the right side of the property as it's configured in front of you. Um, the, uh, Conservation Commission, uh, has voted to recommend that the council enter into an agreement to purchase a conservation easement on this parcel of land. Um, that is what is on offer, uh, and I will, uh, quickly summarize, uh, probably with less accuracy than Mr. Speltz could do if he were here himself, but he's, um, I believe, out of state, uh, some of the attractive features of this, uh, proposal. Um, you can see that, uh, just taking another second on this slide, um, the parcel is outlined in blue, um, this is the, the topo. Um, you can see that there's some pretty steep slopes, uh, but as you get to the, the right side of the property, I'm not sure where the, uh, north-south is, um, that it does become a little bit wet. Um, the, uh, you can see the exist, the, the labeled, uh, at the bottom right, uh, of the screen there is the existing Merrill Conservation Easement. Part of the, uh, Merrill property, as the council knows, is already in conservation, um, and that parcel, uh, contains the, I'm sorry, uh, you can see the, um, the Merrill's home, I believe, reflected, uh, to the, in the top right of that parcel. Um, the, you can see the, um, that it's mostly forested, um, uh, entirely forested, and the, um, picture here is taken before, uh, leaf break in the spring. Uh, the northwest portion of the property, which is, um, circled, is, this is of prime importance, I think, to the Conservation Commission and their decision to make, make the recommendation that they made. Um, the headwaters of the Little Coloss Tributary. There's also some historical, um, features, uh, associated with this property, um, it being the route of the original Mammoth Road.
Doesn't this property abut that, um, that property that was coming in, talking about putting apartments up there?
Yes, it does.
Because this property is also known as Merrill Hill, isn't it?
Yes.
I, I believe that's exactly right. Yes, it, it definitely abuts, um, and I think that, uh, you know, not wanting to speak for the Cotscom, but I think that one of the, uh, reason, you know, there's a, there is a concern about the pace and the scope of development in this area of town, um, and this is a parcel that, uh, could be developed, as I, as I will discuss a little bit more, uh.
Guessing, are, are, who, who's involved in the active negotiations?
Uh, on the, in terms of with, with the, the landowner?
Who from the town is speaking to the Merrills, yeah?
Um, I, I don't know the answer to that. Not, not me at the moment.
I have been.
And so I think we need, um, some insight into what's going on with that.
I, I'm happy to, uh, be.
We don't need to do it here, but we need to.
Certainly, Ms. Ms. Chairman. Um, the, uh, the, and this, this slide, um, speaks a little bit to, um, continuity and connectivity. Um, so you can see other town conservation holdings, um, highlighted, uh, in blue, I'm sorry, in, in purple and in green. Um, it provides a wildlife corridor, um, and it actually provides an undeveloped, is part of an undeveloped corridor extending all the way, uh, to I ninety-three at the extreme right, uh, top of this, um, slide. Uh, it is comprised of both, uh, tier one and tier three habitat. Um, the, uh, tier one habitat, uh, highlighted on the left side is, uh, among the best in the state. Uh, that's how it is characterized. The remainder is supporting habitat, um, because it buffers the, uh, tier one habitat. Um, you can see the wildlife corridor, um, information here, um, the, whoops. Trying to keep it under ten minutes. Um, the, uh, Merrill, so this property, if it were developed, would breaks, uh, the, the wildlife corridors here and, um, and do some, uh, damage from that standpoint. Uh, here is, uh, the high point of the property. This is actually some of the highest, um, to, to your point, Counselor Butler, some of the highest land in Londonderry. Um, it is rocky, uh, and, and steep, um, and that is going to limit the, um, developability, as I'll, as I'll mention in a second. Um, this is the original Mammoth Road, uh, a. This is the original Mammoth Road, a pretty cool look at just how wide this old road was, and Mr. Speltz has told me that that is the basis of the nickname Mammoth. I guess there was a feeling that this road was too, too wide, or it wasn't needed to, it didn't need to be that wide. So if, if that's true, that's a pretty neat, a neat historical note. This is looking south, back towards the Merrill Farm. This marks the boundary, the stone wall does, of the existing easement and property that we're talking about, and this is, this is the area where, if there were to be development, we think most of that development would be taking place based on it being fairly flat and dry. Collateral benefits, that historical preservation feature that I mentioned, reducing traffic congestion in, in area of town that, as you've heard tonight, is already experiencing traffic congestion, and affording the public access to this site. You can see here that the, the steep slopes are called out, and the soil limitations right on Mammoth are, are circled there as well. Based on a development review that took place involving the Planning Department, this parcel could support approximately three to four single-family homes. Again, the keys, the key limits on development are the steep slopes, the wet areas, and it should be noted that this parcel is eligible for multifamily residential, but only an engineering analysis could determine whether such a use could overcome the steepness and other limitations that I've mentioned. The next steps are as follows. The property was appraised in two thousand and eleven for two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. The, the terms that, that have been discussed by the, by the Conservation Commission are a purchase price of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars with an appraisal to confirm that that value is there, allowing the town to back out if it is not there. And the posture, Mr. Chairman, is this, as you know, the, only the town council can authorize this transaction. The Conservation Commission came to me and asked that I bring this to the council on an informal basis, so before that formal consideration of whether to approve or not approve the transaction takes place, on the theory that if, if the council just isn't interested in doing this, or doesn't, or has a concern about it, now would be the time to, at least raise those initial concerns so that we could make an assessment about whether to devote resources to pursuing this project.
Are we buying the land, or are we buying an easement?
My understanding is that the discussions have been around an easement. I'm not sure if you have anything to add to that.
The easement is consistent with what we have already on the rest of the Merrill Farm, and this would facilitate additional protection of the agricultural capabilities of the farm and prevent, you know, encroaching development, and then a little side bonus is that the New England cotton tails that were living at Stonyfield Farm have moved to Merrill Farm, so it would be a, a nice thing to protect that habitat for those endangered species.
I don't think anybody has any objection to buying the land. I mean, we're just, I think it's just a matter of whether it's an easement or it's a purchase.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to know both sides.
Certainly. I, I, if, again, with, with the council's approval, I'm happy to, you know, take a, take more of a, a leading role in this.
If the appraisal comes back higher, or much higher, more than what the town is willing to offer, where do we sit in that situation?
So, the way that we've structured these transactions in the past is, take, for instance, Lithia Springs. Lithia Springs is a parcel that we came to terms with the landowner on a certain price. The appraisal came back higher, and the way it was structured was the seller had to, under the purchase and sales agreement, honor the agreed-upon price. And my recommendation to the council and to the Conservation Commission would be that we continue to observe that practice in negotiating purchase and sales agreements going forward.
Yeah, I think we just probably want to know our options between purchase and easement.
Yeah.
Just get a, you know, get a feel for that. I don't disagree with the Conservation Commission's assessment of that the Merrill Farm was an easement. I'm just thinking the council just probably wants at least to have the information.
Certainly. I, I'm happy to drill, drill down onto that.
In case you have questions, the Merrills are here tonight, if you have some questions for them.
Hi, my name is Ken Merrill. I'm of the five eighty-seven Mammoth, which is the address for this parcel, and I'm also co-owner, co-owner of the Merrill Farm.
Hi, Ken, how are you? Haven't seen you in a number of years, so I hope you're well.
Yeah, well, we're here because we'd like to get your opinion on whether we can work together to try to preserve this parcel, to, in essence, add it to the conservation area that already exists. It's a rather small parcel, but it completes and really makes what we already have there a, a total conservation area.
I don't think there's any doubt, from what I read of the council, that they want to work together.
Yeah, absolutely.
They just want to figure out whether or not they want, just want to see, so if an easement's worth X, just buying it outright is worth what, and just, and just make a decision.
Well, we, we have contracted with an appraiser, and hopefully sometime in September, we'll get answers to that question, but I think tonight, we're just looking for a sense of, would you like to proceed? Would you like to nego-? It's a negotiation.
I, I think the answer's yes.
Yes.
Do we start a negotiation and answer some of these questions, like, is it better to, for the town to buy it, or is it better to just add a conservation easement similarly structured to what's already there?
I think we're in complete agreement with you.
Because we'd like, we'd like to work together with you to.
Absolutely.
Protect a very special parcel. I mean, this parcel hasn't had any type of development on it for two hundred years or more since, since the sheep ate all the, the, the trees off Merrill Hill.
No, I think we're in agreement that we want to work together.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because as we're starting any negotiation, it's an open book, it's an open slate. Let's have everybody throw their, their ideas in, and let's see what we can agree on.
Terrific. Sounds great.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have on that item, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, so why don't we proceed, working with Conservation and with the Merrills, and see what we can work out?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Okay, final thirteen. I'll accept a motion to waive the reading for ordinance two oh two-three dash oh-three.
So moved.
Second.
All right, first reading is, we're reading first reading today. Public hearing will be on August fourteenth. All those in favor, specifically by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative, and we'll see on August fourteenth for the amendment to the zoning ordinance relative to the rezoning map of lot fifteen, map fifteen, lot two thirty-six. Okay, I'll accept the motion to approve the minutes for the June fifth Town Council meeting and the June twenty-first special Town Council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Meetings are, minutes are accepted. Pickleball piece is done. Any liaison reports?
I'll be real quick. Budget Committee had a great tour of the Police Department, given by the chief. Everyone really appreciated him, so thank you, chief, for doing that. Justin Campo came and described the budget process. We've got a few new members on the, on the Budget Committee, so they appreciated Justin doing that, and the Chair, Patrick, wanted me to remind everybody that there's one opening on the Budget Committee, and he'd like to get that filled as soon as possible since budget season's approaching.
We have, I'm sorry, do we have any applications?
We did have one application, I believe.
I was told no, but I, I could certainly be, stand to be corrected on that. My understanding is.
Why don't we repost it?
Okay.
Yeah, that's.
And then as far as solid waste, they just wanted me to remind that there's two openings on solid waste, if anyone's interested.
Yeah, I think long-term, we're looking to bring solid waste and utility together, so I don't know if we're going to do that now, but, I mean, just, just, just sort of say.
That's fine.
We had Planning Board last week, an exciting meeting with New Balance, move forward was approved. I think it'll be a very exciting new addition to town and a landmark, certainly for the town, but also for the state, and certainly there was some great commentary by the VP of New Balance for the econ, economy of Londonderry and the surrounding region, and I think it'll be lasting effects of his words for our region.
Anything else?
School Board, they contracted with an organization or a company on a boss and called PLC to reevaluate the special education needs within the school system, do a, a study of those services provided. They also are reviewing their cellphone policy prior to their address code policy going to print, so that's all I have.
Anything else? Town Manager report.
I'll be very quick, Mr. Chairman. I, I had some meetings, important meetings on water infrastructure. Representative Dunn and I met with Senator Carson and Speaker Packard just to talk about water issues. This is something that I plan to talk a, a lot about in, in the coming meetings. We've had consultations, as you know, Mr. Chairman, with the DES Commissioner. There's a meeting coming up that will involve you, Mr. Chairman, and Representative Dunn at the Commissioner's Office to talk about some of these issues, and I just cannot thank our representatives in Concord enough for the ten million dollars roughly that they have allocated through the budget to get a, a supply of water across the Merrimack River to, to the east side of the river. You know, that is an important step in this process to expand the availability of clean, safe, drink, abundant drinking water in Londonderry. There's work to be done, and the work can be visualized here. We've, now, we've gotten the supply to the east side of the river. That is a significant undertaking. It's paid for, but what is not paid for is getting the water to the Londonderry line, and you can see, you know, just by my rough calculation, that's a distance of some four, four and a half miles. That is not going to be cheap, and we are working right now to assemble a, a funding package that will hopefully include federal money, state money, money potentially from others who might benefit from this program outside of Londonderry, and also from Londonderry. When we went into this last budget season, I think that everybody was on the same page, that Londonderry is certainly not going to have to pay for all of this, or nearly all of it, but we should expect to be a participant in the funding puzzle, and, and so I'm just, I'm going to emphasize at every opportunity the importance of getting this water to the Londonderry line so that we can, you know, take, take the next step towards solving all of our water problems.
Council probably recalls, I shared an article with you for the Wall Street Journal, saying that, I think it's fifty percent of the homes in the United States will be affected by PFAs. So when we go up to the state to see the Commissioner, we may want to bring that article with us.
It's, it's alarming, and, and the percentages are among the highest in the country in Rockingham County, so we really are ground zero, and it's not going away by itself.
That's why I want to make sure when we go up there, we go up with a, you know, all the information we need.
We're ready.
Hey, Mike, do you know if that pipeline has a path right now?
No, indeterminate. There's a couple of different options. I think that, I think DES may favor one versus the other, but I, I'm hoping to learn more about that when we go up in the next couple of weeks.
Anything from you, Kelly?
Two briefings. This morning, I attended a Chamber of Commerce meeting focused on economic development, so I gave an overview of what we have going on in Londonderry, such as New Balance. That's something I'll be participating in going forward, and then wanted to inform the council that we've applied for the Invest New Hampshire funds, so hopefully we'll receive some, and that will assist in updating our development regulations and zoning ordinance.
All right, anything else from the council? I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Ladies and gentlemen, our next meeting is, I'm sorry, did you have something?
I'm wondering if we're able to change the dates to go forward. I know consistently, we're normally meeting the first and the third of the month. Are we able to?
During the summer, we only meet once a month.
I understand, but I know there's been some people questioning about, I know not all of us have a schedule that can always meet, but if we can try to stick more to our first and third Mondays?
If we stay on the schedule we're on right now.
Yeah.
Which is the one I've given to the town.
Yes.
Is that we have Labor Day, we have to skip over, and then we have, so that we should fall back in line before budget in October.
Okay, great.
But there's, I'm working around holidays. The last meeting had to be canceled because of vacations.
Of course.
So, you know, work, working around availability is, you know, what we've been doing.
Okay, sounds good.
But it's the intent to be back on schedule for the budgets.
Okay, great.
So right now, at this moment, the, and it may change, I guess, will be, the next meeting will be August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. All those in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and we are adjourned. Thank you.